All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:02 PM and I call this meeting to order. We are at 100 Polk Avenue here in beautiful city of Cape Canaveral City Hall. At this time, we're going to go in the Pledge of Allegiance. City manager, would you lead us, please? Thank you. City clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis. Mayor Protim Cullum.
Here.
Mayor Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Raymond. Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Thank you very much. This time, we're going to go ahead and get started. This is a workshop recapping the strategic planning meeting we recently had. We decided at that meeting to come together and to go through. We had a long list of projects that staff presented. We also had some Blue Sky initiatives that we had talked about, working with strategic planning consultants, SGR. And so today, we have got our agenda set out. We're going to go through this. For those of you who might be listening at home, please raise your hand if you have any questions. And at this time, we are going to go into the public participation portion of the meeting. I have got two cards here today. One from Ms. Doctor, excuse me, Shannon Roberts. I am reading your card. It says that you wish to speak at public participation regarding the visioning and strategic goals. And on agenda item that relates the projects. Do you want to wait till we get to those projects or would you like to speak now? I do. Well, I have two cards. Yes, I've got one from Stuart Smith as well. So if you'd like, it might be helpful for us to maybe give an overview and when we get to it, we can come back to you if you'd like. Okay. I think the, I think coming up now would be good for the Blue Sky. Yes. If you're ready. Thank you.
One of the expectations that I had as a resident and also just as a member of the community for many years was a divisioning session such as we had, you know, before. Not saying we did it perfect then, but I think the expectations that at least I had as a resident were that the the three visioning sessions that took place and whatever forums they took, we're going to feed into our strategic visioning and our strategic planning. And so I thought the order of expectation, at least for me as a resident, was to take the input from the residents during those visioning sessions, put that together into a meaningful strategic planning document, and then from there integrate that with what the staff may be coming up with, you know, specific annual projects. And so I find myself feeling like we've got the cart before the horse in some ways because we're looking at specific projects. I don't see where the residence input has been captured in any way to talk about the big picture in terms of the visioning, the strategic goals, the projects that would come out of that, and then the specific one-year projects or whatever years that we decide like tonight. That's where I'm just feeling like it's a huge, at least a big gap for me with strategic planning as an expectation that the visioning effort. I feel like we're doing the traditional, you know, staff planning now with the projects, but I don't know that the tie-in with the visioning, the strategic goals and the strategic view has been tied in from what the residents were expecting. I'm just talking as one resident. I was truly thinking that big picture would be before you, back tonight, to where those projects would be put in the context of that. And that's what, at least for me as a resident, I feel like we're missing. So I just feel like that ideally would have come after the report from the three visioning sessions. That ideally would have been the framework for what you're talking about tonight and both the short term and long term. So I just feel like this is unfortunately missing now from my perspective, and I don't know what the strategic tie-in is to the visioning effort at this stage. I think it's great input from the staff. I don't want it to change them, but I just don't see the tie-in with the vision or the strategic planning. And that concerns me.
Thank you. That is captured, and I think we are going to have an opportunity to address that tonight. That was, you had two boxes checked, but I think that was the first box and the second one related to projects. The street, I think, I think you captured that as well.
What I'd be expecting as a resident is when you all start talking about the project, you have it linked to one of the strategic goals or visioning outcomes from the residents, but we don't even have the input from the residents right now. So that's where I feel like that's a huge missing link.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. If any council, like I said, we all have a chance to get another city manager. Want to speak to that now or wait?
Okay. I think it's a good point that Dr. Roberts brings up, and we do have Doug Thomas on the virtual meeting, so he can speak to this too. It was a very conscious effort to time these the way that we did. The strategic planning retreat always takes time, always takes that last week of March. And that's important because that feeds into the budget season every year. The visioning, which we don't do, but once every 10, 12, 15 years, started prior to that so that we could have that kind of working in parallel with it. So the input, we could be hearing the things that people are saying and sensing the tone of what people are thinking, but they're very separate projects. As you said, there's the one year and up to five year for what we're doing here, and then the visioning is much longer range. So, and they do marry at some point. So to that, I would ask Doug Thomas, if he's there, if you would unmute him, Daniel, maybe he could speak to that.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Okay. Super. Appreciate that. And thank you, Dr. Roberts, as well. I would follow up on what Todd had just mentioned in terms of the background, that the two are related but are not necessarily identical. That being said, and I believe you had an opportunity to be present at the at the council's strategic planning session that we did on the 30th. I wanted to make sure because the timing was that we were not going to be completed with the visioning project at the time the September or the March 30th council strategic session took place. And so I did provide a pretty extensive overview of the trends and the issues coming out of the visioning project so that they would have that information before them. And the staff could certainly be part of that discussion as well prior to rolling through the various updates on the current projects that the staff is working on in addition to the proposed projects moving forward. So we recognized that it was not going to be completed at the time of the March 30th meeting, but I certainly wanted to make sure that we had at least the latest and greatest information that was available before the city council at that session.
Yeah, thank you, Doug. So the trends were presented. So in essence, you got a preview, if that makes sense, of the, of the visioning at the meeting. Understand. There.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, I've got your card here. Ready? Come on up. Thank you.
So council members, mayor, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you and fellow citizens. Thanks for listening. Stu Smith, 2154 Drive in the coolest little hood in Cape Canaveral, Harbor Heights. Longtime resident here, entered into the military from here and returned here. I presented before the board before about the economic development recommendations that I have to be inclusive in the strategic planning process. And again, just from the outside looking in from a citizen's point of view on the last planning process, it wasn't very apparent where economic development fit into that planning process. And I've participated in this process as much as I could. So I'm here just to to bring you back up to speed, reinforce my willingness to assist the city in any way I can to include if the Economic Development Working Group or the West, I forget exactly how we refer to it, the
Board?
Yeah, the board, the Economic Development Board, my willingness to do this. In fact, I brought my application and resonated with me. So but I would encourage you, whether it's a specific goal area, how reliable, hard it works in this planning process, or a set of strategies within there. And Mayor Morrison has actually gone as far as to outline the history of that and then economic development and actually some action items in there. So again, I'm just asking for your consideration to ensure that economic development is in the rightful place within the strategic planning process. We re-engage the board, re-engage the businesses in this community and recognize how important it is for the city, but what a unique position that we're in. If you think about coming off of 528, we are, for many people, their first view of Bovard County. Right? And what they see here in the city of Cape Canaveral impresses them about what goes on in Bovard County. So I think we're uniquely positioned that way. And I know that we've been dominated by tourism and hotel development. That's all good stuff. And I think there's just a lot of opportunity to develop small businesses, create opportunities for citizens of small business. And you know about my offer. I've sent that email as far as my ability to coordinate the SBA score, groundswell and other incubators and to represent my association, the Florida Association of Veteran-owned Businesses to help the city with economic development. So if you don't mind, I'll give, since I've got it signed, I'll give me and my application. And unfortunately tonight, I'm going to have to participate the rest virtually unless there's, mayor, any questions?
Nope, at this time. Good. Thank you. Okay. Deputy City Clerk, anyone out there in the virtual world who wants to speak? Seeing none. Okay. Public participation at this point is closed. As we get in, we can expand. Now, we're going to move into the discussion item of our meeting, which is to review projects presented at the strategic planning meeting. Actually, scroll back up there, Daniel. Oh, now I got it right here. The strategic planning retreat on March 30th, 2022, and review the draft capital improvement project, as we call the CIP books for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget. Before we get into this summer, I just want to say this. I want to, tonight, I think two things are happening, which may not seem significant, but I find them very valuable and significant. And one is that since I've been paying attention to strategic planning, which may have started in 2012, let's see, or maybe 13, 14, this is the first workshop that we've ever done as a post-follow-up. And I just want to thank the council and staff for taking the time to do this and working it in. Our budgeting process, if you ever look at our budget books, is pretty intense with a lot of demands from staff and state statutory deadlines. And so the strategic planning in March fits in nicely to that. So to insert another workshop meeting created a bit of a crunch, but we worked through it. And the second thing was when we were trying to figure out a date to do it, one of the challenges we've always had in the past was that when we hold these meetings, sometimes they're before a council meeting, and so there'll be a hard stop. So we might start this meeting at 4:00 PM and then stop at 6:00 PM, and it puts a lot of constraint and pressure. And staff worked through multiple schedules here on this council, including themselves, and made tonight possible. So I want to thank you for that as well. I really appreciate it. This means a lot, and I, and I feel excited about what we're moving through. And with that being said, let's get into it. The, Todd, do you want to kick us off here and give a brief overview of what we're diving into?
Yes, I would be honored. Thank you, mayor. The, thank you for the overview. That's, there's two new council members, as we know here on the dais, who haven't been through the strategic planning process with us before. So you're getting something new as the whole council is getting something new. This, this is different. Every year, we would do the strategic planning retreat, and then the next step would be the council would rank or vote on those items that were presented at the retreat. Well, this is brand new. This is a chance to, we've had them for a few weeks now. We've been thinking about them. Perhaps we've talked to our constituency about them, and we've got a new perspective. So the way I would like to lead us through, mayor, is to open up each one. And Daniel was prepared to advance the same slides that we had last time. And we'll just, I'll introduce it, might say a few words about it, and then to be respectful of everybody's time, if, if there's no one that really wants to talk about, about a particular project, we just don't need to spend any time on that because it could be, it's a no-brainer. It could be, there's no way I'm voting for that thing or whatever. But let's talk about the ones that are meaningful to the council, the ones that are meaning to the, meaningful to the residents. So we'll do that about all of those projects, the ones that staff brought up, the ones that the council brought up in the Blue Sky. So that'll be kind of the first half of the night. Second half of the night will be to review the CIPs, the Capital Improvement Plan, and that's our five-year plan. There, there's a lot of overlap in this. Some things are new into the CIPs as as recently as last year. We could be putting new things into the CIP as a result of this. There are things that were on there three years ago, four years ago. So we want to have that opportunity to kind of look holistically at all of this, not only the new strategy, but the strategies we've looked at over the last four or five years. So we've got them all in our mind. We'll review all of those things. And it sounds like a lot, but I'm willing to bet we're all familiar with a lot of things, and we can get through it fairly rapidly without feeling rushed, if that makes sense. So if that's okay, mayor, we'll go ahead and get started. Daniel, let's go ahead, advance to the first project. Center Street Drainage Basin Improvements. This is obviously a very important one to all of us. We had an update Tuesday night from Mead and Hunt on their study. We've got the recommendations of the tidal valve and the pump. Obviously, there's St. John's permitting. You can, you can read it all there, filtration. We're not sure that upsizing the stormwater pipes is the first thing we want to do. But since council will be voting on this, I wanted to open it up to see if there's any questions that need to be answered about this. This is, this is kind of one of those no-brainer things we are going to have to do something about. And I meant to say also, Doug Thomas will be contacting the council members by Monday. So that's just first of next week with those ranking sheets. So you, right out, right on the heels of this, within a couple of days, you'll get those ranking sheets, and you'll be able to rank and score those things. So are there any questions? We want to talk about the Center Street Drainage improvements that we didn't cover Tuesday night. This will appear in this, in the strategic plan ranking sheets for consideration.
Counsel? I've got a, I've got a question. He, in that presentation, he didn't really speak to the underground vaulted collection, exfiltration system. So, but he did say that that was a step, an interim step that would be very helpful. Yep. Where, where would we put that? With his recommendation of five scenarios?
Jeff, you want to respond on that one? I think it goes along with it. The, we're, they gave us a step-by-step plan of what we could do with upsizing pipes. We feel like that's not the first thing we want to do. The first thing we want to do is the tidal valve and the pump.
Right.
And then also, right on the heels of that, look for some, some stormwater catchment systems or basin systems. And he did talk to that briefly, didn't he? Jeff, do you recall what he said?
Yeah, ideally, we would get that parking lot facility on Center Street. About an acre on the south side of Center Street. A game changer. If we could get our, if the city could get that property. But that, that would be the main focus for underground chambers.
Okay. What, what about, for instance, existing property we already have?
Yeah, you brought that up a couple of months ago. We're, we're always looking at that.
Okay.
You know, redeveloping the leisure services property.
Right.
That's a definite possibility.
Okay, but we really don't have any engineering ideas on that yet. Okay. Yeah.
That's a large area.
Well, I'm bringing up the question because we don't know when we're going to acquire anything else. And we have this.
Right.
So it seems to me that we would utilize what we have first. I mean, after we do the upsized pipe and the pump system. So.
Well, the chambers there would be part of a larger project. That's the redevelopment of the leisure services property.
Yeah, well.
There's a lot of work to do there.
Of course. Okay.
And that ties in with the Civic Hub project, which we will be getting to.
Okay.
But the, the, the short answer is yes, there's benefit to be gained by putting storm vaults into the Civic Hub property. We just don't know to what extent we're going, how big it's going to be. A lot of that's going to come from the master plan project. We'll be talking about that during the Civic Hub.
I have a question. So the first thing is the pump and the tidal, whatever, and then the, then the pipes?
No, then, then we're going to be looking for areas to capture it in vaults.
Okay.
And the stormwater pond.
Right there.
Both those together.
Yeah. How much is the cost of that wet pond?
The one on Center Street?
Yeah.
Dave, do you feel comfortable talking about the discussion you recently had with the owner of that property?
Is this always on? I don't see any light. As late as today, I've been talking with the new owner of a significant area of property down on Center Street. And this particular owner has assembled a large tract of land, almost eight acres in total for a mixed-use project. Very exciting. I think we'll be, we'll be discussing this project with the council over the next 30 days. And as part of this project, there is the portion of the site that they have already closed on is on the south side of Center Street. It's approximately an acre. Jeff? And that is going to be surplus to the mixed-use project. So it's not critical for the project to move forward. And we have had some preliminary conversations with the developer about various scenarios of the city acquiring this property up to and including donating it to the city for a stormwater project, which could significantly fast-track it, could significantly reduce our costs. Very exciting opportunity. So, you know, we're not, I'm not at a point where we can start nailing this down. I think we, we have some policy issues we're going to have to work through with the Planning and Zoning Board. You facilitate a project such as this. But the, the potential is there for a very exciting stormwater project on Center Street. And possibly at a very attractive cost as far as the land acquisition goes. So stay tuned. Exciting stuff. And I'm going to throw in a little plug here too, while I'm at it, while I'm standing up here. You know, one of the things that I hear a lot about is code enforcement and blight along North Atlantic. And this is a, this, this could potentially be a perfect project for a nice redevelopment of that site and just get rid of a big eyesore and a big blighted property. At the same time, we're accomplishing these other exciting priorities of the city council. So exciting stuff, and we'll be, you'll, you'll be right in the middle of it here, real rules. So stay tuned.
And I would just add that nothing good is free. There's, there certainly will be some costs we're going to have to consider. It may not be monetary, but perhaps density will be a consideration for the project. I expect that this developer will want to talk with the council pretty soon about those ideas, and we'll probably entering some sort of a development agreement. But the, the, for the pluses for the city, it's the stormwater for sure, the removal of blight. We're going to have to consider what their needs are too. So you want both parties to win in this, and it has to be something we can all agree to. So that's coming up very soon. It's a long answer to a short question.
So that, that would be where the, where the grass part is.
Where the parking lot is.
And that giant parking lot.
It's the giant parking, only the giant parking. Yeah. It's, this is only the giant parking lot, not the grass park.
Okay, thank you.
And the parcel size where the stormwater pond would go is one acre?
One acre.
The developers on the north side of Center Street and the plaza or the multi, okay. And you said he was, if he has ownership of the south side?
Yeah, the, it's a unique parcel in that it spans both sides of the street.
Ah, got it. That's what was confusing me. So there's a road going through, what, okay.
Yeah.
And what you need is the project is self-contained on the north side.
Everything he wants to do on the north side of Center Street. So this piece on the south is, I don't, never want, never want to say he doesn't need it, but it's, 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 it's not a high priority for him. And so he can, essentially what it's going to come down to, let's just talk turkey here. It's going to, there's going to be some trading going on between what the city can offer and what he can offer, and it's, it's, it's going to be a, it's going to be a chip that we have to throw into the big pot and stir it up and see what we're comfortable with doing.
And mixed use would be awesome there.
So that's coming sooner rather than later, as they've said, probably within a month. We'll be approaching the council with perhaps some talks with that.
And that's sooner than later with the stormwater is really good too.
Anything else on the Center Street Drainage Basin System? One other thing, I've asked Tim to look into, Tim's been developing for some time this plan for a pervious curbing system. So if you think about the curbs that are already in the presidential streets and other streets as well, that's the first place the water goes to before it gets into the system. If those curbs were pervious and they drained down in there, straight down from those curbs, they would have to fill up before they go into the rest of the system. So I've tasked him with finding an area that we're having some known storage issues in the, in the curbs, and let's do a test project there. We've been real excited about that. And Tim, is there anything else I'm missing on that? Basically, that's, we're going to be doing a test site. We haven't picked the location yet, but that could be a pretty cool project, and it could also help us here.
Excellent. Thank you. The, just a in the spirit of strategy, when we're getting back to this Center Street, and I know we're spending some time on this, but I think we'd all agree it's a big issue. So if anything gets a little time, it would be justified here. The tidal valve and the pump, step one. If this property acquisition goes through, you know, I love, the downside of acquiring your property is, you know, you take it off the tax roll. But second is you might lose a valuable piece of property that a business or a resident could come into. However, we're going to do our best to make it a, maybe a stormwater park and a nice amenity to the public. So I know it's not going to complete, it's going to be, it's going to be better than it is today, right? That, that, there's no disagreement there. However, I guess in an optimal best-case scenario, I want to just plant a seed, if it's even possible, is that when we're, find these opportunities where developers come in or just individual property owners come in to redevelop a site or acquire it. If he was going to say the eight, the eight-acre parcel, he was going to demo that and redevelop and build something, depending on how intense the use is, he might have to build onsite stormwater retention, right? That's not currently there today. And so that uses a valuable space for him that he can't use for things. But in the event that we're there at the right time, the land is essentially vacant and cleared. Have we thought about a plan where we can come in similar to, we've talked have we thought about a plan where we can come in similar to, we've talked about the promenade and, uh, install retention shared costs or get some sort of land rights that he still retains above the grade, but we have the ability to put stormwater under these big parcels? And then that way we don't give up usable space. Um, I don't know if that's been tried in other communities. Does that make sense? So we're not locking it up. It's like, we come in, we kind of co-develop, we're going to meet our interests to, to con, um, to contain stormwater and you get to use the entire property.
Yeah, we've, we've had some preliminary conversations, um, with him, uh, to include vaulting it and, and allowing his tenants to use the above-grade improvements as an amenity for his project, for his, for his residents. So nothing's off the table at this point. Um, we're exploring a lot of different things and as, as the city manager said, what's, what meets both parties' needs, um, as.
It is a little bit more complex. I mean, since we would be seeking, uh, St. John's funds, Indian River Lagoon funding for the construction of this, they might have some strings attached to how this property is owned and used. So it's all open for discussion for sure.
It, it's just that, getting back to what Councilmember Willis told me, is land we already own is a rational first step, but this is kind of a hybrid approach opposed to having to buy land. Can we take advantage if timing's right? Especially if we're successful in these redevelopment initiatives to say, hey, let us come in, install this. So I just wanted to play.
You're, you're, you're referring to the, the south side of Center Street property?
Actually, well, no, uh, that, yes, but the eight acres on the north side, if he's going to come in and demo that, can he give us a six-month window or what to come in and, and do a stormwater and install underneath that giant property?
Right, but what if he, what if his construction needed the entire property? And, but he's still going to need to have the stormwater retention because he owns that property. Wouldn't he need to utilize the south side as a stormwater retention? What I, what I'm getting at is we'll help you, but you have to turn this property into stormwater retention.
Right, yeah. Our, our conversations with him have been, at least my sense is that he's going to be able to handle all of his stormwater on his seven acres. So this is truly a surplus piece of property.
Okay.
And how he's going to do that, it's a pretty intense project. I've seen a site plan of it. But he is going to be, um, employing a number of what we refer to as low-impact development, um, techniques. He's going to be doing all vaulted stormwater under his project. He's going to be, um, capturing rainwater. He's going to be using pervious pavement. This is a very exciting project that in, in some ways could be a, a real showcase of, of a, of a, a true LID project. Um, um, so I, I, I apologize for, we haven't nailed down a lot of this. It's still very early in the conversation, um, but, uh, um, I, I believe he's very willing to try almost anything and to consider a lot of different options and, uh, so.
Well, I, I agree with the mayor that if timing is right and we can achieve some of our goals in addition to his, we, we got to take advantage of it.
Sure.
We're opening that dialogue and we'll have, have more soon.
Okay. Yeah, and I remember the old facilities plan for that, acquire the land, it was like five hundred thousand. I could be wrong, or maybe it was a million and, but to go under, it was, if I remember, double. And so I think, hey, the, the increase is probably similar to a private property owner. For us to go, hey, if you develop this property, do underwater and he, you know, he gets sticker shock and says, I'll do my little pond over here in kind of the minimum. Well, that's where the city might be able to come in and say, we'll cover the other half because you're not going to put strain on our main system. You guys have, I think, heard enough on this and I'm excited about it.
Yeah, and, and those are projects typical of involvement with a, with a CRA.
Exactly.
And, and so that is, this property is within our CRA. Um, so.
Flooding is blight.
Correct. It can be. So there's, uh, you know, the, the, the dominoes certainly appear to be lining up for us on, on this area.
Mayor, before we leave this project, I think it'd be helpful if you would just ask if there's any members of the public that want to speak to the item before we move on to the next one.
Great idea. Anyone today? Dr. Roberts, come on up. While she's coming up, Deputy City Clerk, for those of you who are listening at home, if you would like to, uh, speak up, we were talking about the Center Street Drainage Basin improvements, please raise your hand. Uh, our Deputy City Clerk will recognize you and you'll have a chance to speak. Yes, Ms. Roberts?
Uh, thank you. And this project, as David says, is so exciting, I think, for the community. And I wanted to bring to the council's attention, they recall then two thousand nine, ten visioning effort, you know, when we had the photo, showing there were opportunities for the residents to contribute ideas as to where we might have restaurants, for example. One of the key places that was mentioned was Center Street because it's elevated above the river and it seems to be, David, this may be part of his plan, I'm not sure her plan, depending on who the developer is, but that was where they saw an opportunity for us to put a, sort of a waterfront, not right there because we've got slant on the river, but something that was, that would enable a water view, you know, that would be restaurants serving the needs of the community and maybe the visiting public. But I just wanted to mention that it's consistent. If that's part of it, the restaurant was something that the community really was very strong on and that was evidenced by the number of dots that were placed on that particular, uh, goal-setting opportunity.
Thank you. Agreed. Anyone else here? Deputy City Clerk, seeing none, okay.
Move on, Daniel. The next one is, up is, uh, Daniel. Uh, water regulation facility, affluent and fluent disc and drum filter installations, sixty percent completed, slightly behind schedule. This is part of an SRF-funded project with grant money. Um, we reviewed this again at the retreat, uh, talked about the replacement of the headworks and the sand filters. I did get a chance to go out and see the, the filter, the, the disc system is fantastic. It's just the coolest thing. It cleans itself. Uh, they're easily replaceable. Great technology, whoever did that. Um, we would like to continue this, scheduled for completion of summer of this year. Any questions on this one, Mayor?
One point seven six million with two hundred fifty, so is it like two million or is the two hundred fifty a part of the one point seven?
Jeff?
Thank you. So it's one and a half million and then, okay. Um, council, any questions on this? Sixty percent completed, a little behind schedule. Scheduled to complete this summer. This summer.
I've got a question. When did, when did this begin?
Jeff?
Uh, yeah, uh, that's, okay. Okay. All right. I think we're going to run into that a lot tonight, huh?
Sure.
Yeah, we'll find it in the haulage project.
Okay.
And if, if you haven't seen it, June will give you a fantastic tour of the disc system. It's, it's great. She gave me one a couple of weeks ago. Wonderful.
So June knows what's going on in the city, just a little bit. Thank you.
And currently I just got the note that there are no members of the public on, on the webinar, but we should still check.
Yes. Seeing head shaking, no?
Okay, we can move on then, Mayor?
Yes, I think, council, are we good with this one? Um, thank you.
All right, Daniel? Long Point Road, Estuary Park. This, this one's had some permitting setbacks from St. John's. Uh, we're five percent complete, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars with grant funds of fifty percent. It's located on the western end of Long Point Road. Um, we've been in regular contact with the, uh, the owners and the residents down there and want to make sure we work very well with them. As it says, we've been removed invasive species. Construction is scheduled to begin, um, is that still on track for, uh, this summer, Jeff? Okay. And, um, it will include the kayak trail, hopefully connecting to the Brevardmu Aquarium, as Keith Winston talked about the other day. This would be a, a point of connection there. Uh, any questions on the Long Point project?
So, one thing that Councilmember Willis said is when did it start? That was a question I had. Some of them tell us when they end. I know it's a little difficult, but, um, this one, I'm trying to figure the, the end date. And I created my own like spreadsheet with these projects to try to, to fill in the blanks so I can see. But construction is scheduled to begin mid-two thousand twenty-two, which is about now or maybe in a couple of months. Purely mid with a six-months completion timeframe. So we're beginning at two thousand twenty-three, this will be.
Jeff, does that seem reasonable, early two thousand twenty-three completed? December of this year.
Ah.
And, uh, I want to thank Councilmember Willis. He's been actively engaged with, um, at least one or more of the residents down there on some concerns they have. And Tim, thank you also for being, helping out with that. Definitely affects that neighborhood.
Well, any, any way that we, as we're developing this, that we can assist them with their issues, that would be tremendous.
Absolutely.
Yes, um, Ms. Green, Joe Abrew.
Yeah.
Um, thank you. I, I want to echo that. I think we've, we've all seen that and I have given a lot of attention and I think everyone's given a lot of attention to Lincoln Buchanan, the Center Street Basin. But Long Point is sitting over there and I think we were trying to address this. And it's been, we've been after it for a while and so.
COVID set back St. John's quite a bit from my, my understanding. Um, just, they just weren't putting out a whole lot of work product very quickly. But, uh, we, we feel confident. Where are we on the permit right now, Jeff? In May, okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Is there, um, is there any way, I know there's going to be a small parking that is there to put the filtration under the parking there to help with the flooding down the end of it?
Um, there, there's some, specifically the flooding at the end of Oak Lane. What's the plan for addressing that?
Oak Lane?
I'm sorry. I was, I was moving ahead, sorry. Long Point. Long Point. Come on up. You guys might as well sit up front.
You're front row worthy.
All right, so your question was, what are the plans for the stormwater on the end of?
Yeah, because when it rains, they get flooded down there, right?
Right, um. I've spoken to quite a few of the residents down there and, uh, me and, uh, Councilmember Willis went out there and looked at some of the concerns that they had. Um, a lot of those concerns, they are really close to wetlands. In fact, they're right on the border of the wetlands. Um, it's a, it's a marshy area down there. Uh, we do have a really nice stormwater system going in when this gets constructed though, uh, which will gather all the stormwater off that whole road at the end and put it into a pond just north of there. Um, so that's what the design calls for. Um, I'm not sure if that's a hundred percent planned yet and, uh, that is, so that is the, the final design.
And the pond will be where?
It'll be just north. So you'll have the parking lot as you drive in and then just to the north of the parking lot will be a retention pond in that area.
So that will relieve the flooding?
Yes, that will relieve a lot of it, yes. Right now, we only have this little tiny, I'd say ten foot by fifteen foot, if you even want to call it a retention area. And it totally just gets full all the time, ends up going into the neighbor's yards and, and this will relieve all that.
Right.
So we definitely put that in consideration.
And that's part of the cost?
Yes, yes, that's all included.
Correct me if I'm wrong, would just jump in here. That's always been low-lying wetland, to your point. But that development on the south side of Long, yeah, Long Point, it's not, uh, it has merit to think that had that, there's a lot of pavement there. And I don't know how that stormwater does when it hits there. But the, the belief, and when you stand there and look at it, it makes sense, is that that pavement has increased. So the abutting parcel has put a lot of stormwater pressure on, um, the folks on, on Long Point Road. And so as far as like responsibility and, you know, if there's anything, because at some point you kind of run out of room, you know, there's only, you're, you're landlocked, you've got private property, but over there, I don't know if there was anything, or you agree with that theory, or if, if we've had consultants pro, provide that, but it, you, you know what I'm saying?
I, I know exactly what you're saying and, and, uh, city manager and I have discussed it and, and, uh, Tim, uh, about ways we might be able to, to help them without being on their property.
Yeah, good.
So, uh.
If you want to, if you want a brief rundown, I actually did a history search on that whole area over there. Um, according to what I found, St. John's River Management gave the parcel area just to the south of all these houses, uh, permission to build up and to build into the wetlands as long as they mitigated.
They had to control everything that fell on their parcel as well. They couldn't have anything go off of their parcel.
So, so St. John's wanted them to put a swale and a ditch system in that ran all the way around their whole subdivision and then to the back parcel of the property.
The perimeter.
Correct.
So they were allowed to put fill, is that right? They built, when you said build up, you're not talking about fill?
Well, if you go into their backyards, you can see that they're three, four foot higher than the, the residents that are actually literally on Long Point.
Exactly.
So that, that's the issue that, that has arisen. And then I found the blueprints for the, uh, I'm sorry, what's her name?
Uh, Ms. Green.
Ms. Green?
Yeah.
Ms. Green's, uh, land and the backyard was considered a wet retention area per the plans because they knew they were in a low-lying, uh, area that would just take on water. Um, I wasn't here during, when the St. John's approved all that and normally we don't get involved when St. John's is involved with a private entity. Um, but as far as I know, uh, they approved the plans for those condos to go in and the way they went in. Um, and when the residents on Long Point built their houses, I'm under the belief that they knew there was wetlands in that area as well. And I think that just slowly, it's, it's happened like it has.
So, Mayor, I think we're, we're drifting a little bit off of topic and I think these are all interesting things, but we do have a schedule to keep.
The big one, this is a very important one that seems to be coming back. So thank you. I know challenges are ahead, but we'll overcome.
But we will have a really nice stormwater system at the end of Long Point to take on a lot of this water. And it will.
Yep.
It will go to retention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, anything else on this one?
Seven hundred fifty thousand dollars with grant funds, same question. It says fifty percent are grants. So is that three hundred seventy-five thousand in grant funds or is it another, is it going to be a one point five million dollar project?
Jeff?
Seven fifty, so half of the seven hundred fifty is grant-funded? The, the city is going to be responsible for the, out of the, okay. Um, and December's the deadline. Thank you. That's all my questions. Council, anything else? Thank you. I think we're ready to go.
Daniel, anybody? No? Okay, well, let's go ahead and advance to the next one, Daniel.
Let's do this, that, um, if, if you're okay with it, uh, Daniel, um, if you have a hand raised, would you just notify us at the appropriate time? That way we don't, I can see you perfect, that way we don't have to.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The next one is Oak Lane Improvements. I want to thank Council, or Mayor Protem Callum for all of her hard work on this. Um, this has been a labor of love for hers for her whole time on the council and it's actually becoming a reality. So, uh, she did meet with, um, the residents down there. I got involved with her at one point and it was all very friendly. Uh, the, the residents want the roadway. Uh, they want to see some, some stormwater control there as well, which we will do. The, the parcel at the end of Oak Lane, um, the one that recently did not get rezoned. Uh, we have a, I believe it's a twenty-foot wide easement through that property. So that's sufficient for us to bring our stormwater through that property to the Canaveral Ditch. Um, the, the project, uh, will not include, uh, sidewalks. That was confirmed. Thank you, Councilmember Willis, for that. They do not want sidewalks out there. Uh, so there will be a installation of a curb, uh, with better containment system for the water, the stormwater. And, um, also a French drain will be installed adjacent to the restaurant, La Cantina there, uh, to help alleviate some of the problems they've had with. La Cantina there to help alleviate some of the problems they've had with flooding. We're looking at engineering design completion this summer and construction beginning in fall. Total is eight hundred thousand dollars. And Mayor, any questions?
Jump in, Counsel, if you have any.
I have a question. In this in this capital improvement. Plan I have here, it says. Five hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred. There it says eight hundred thousand.
John, you want to take this? Design costs is.
I mean, this is the new. Book we just got.
Okay, so the presentation. Is. Different than the capital improvement.
Jeff, go ahead. You got something for us?
Yeah, the eight hundred thousand budget. So if you add it all up, it does come to eight hundred thousand. Their stormwater money, their general fund, I believe. So when you add them all up, it comes to around eight hundred thousand.
Okay, and that will be funded. Oak Lane is in the CRA. Is money coming from the CRA?
John?
Yes, Oak Lane is in the CRA.
We have a.
And like Jeff said, then there's monies coming out of stormwater. So there's different pots of money.
The total, do we have a breakdown on what's coming from the CRA?
Yes, as we go through the. The CIPs, it'll reflect that, but I could look through that for you while we're. Talking about it.
I don't understand. If. The answer to Council Mayor Pro Tem Callum's question. Five hundred fifty thousand, five hundred. And and Jeff, you're saying. Have we already spent three hundred thousand on it? Then where's the other three hundred thousand in the CIP or?
I think it's on the CRA page.
Yeah, I'm. Yeah, what page are you looking at?
Well, the summary sheet is.
Summary, but in the page doesn't have a number.
Money from stormwater, CRA. Maybe even a little wasteful. I don't think.
Okay, here's the here's the here's where the. We all know the Oak Lane's in the CRA, right? But in this instance, IM twelve. It's in infrastructure maintenance, five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Okay, so if you go to IM twelve in your IM. In your CIP book.
Got it.
That that's where. We don't, we want to eliminate the confusion. We know that the Oak Lane is in the CRA, but based on the project and the funding. In this instance, the if you go to IM twelve. You will see where. The general fund IM will put the engineering design and construct construction improvements in Oak Lane of five hundred fifty-one thousand. And then you can go over to. Stormwater. And there's three hundred and one thousand that makes up the eight hundred thousand that we were talking about. So it's in IM and stormwater. SW eight and IM twelve in your CIP books.
I'm just confused that, you know, when it says sources of funding, it says general fund.
Yes.
Why wouldn't it say?
It's in the it's in IM. This this project, this particular project. Is not in, this is not being funded by the CRA. It's in the.
It's in the CRA.
It's it's in the CRA in terms of the fifty-six percent of the city composed of.
But why wouldn't we use CRA?
Because the CRA funds, this is, there's, there's not a reason to use CRA funds here because the CRA funds are being used. For other projects, which we will talk about when we get to the CRA, when we do the CIPs. It'll all come together.
They're obligated elsewhere.
Yes.
Oh. Okay.
If the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars was in the CRA, then something that was in the CRA budget as we proposed for this next year. That would not be able to be funded by the CRA.
What's the stormwater page? It's stormwater SW.
Is.
The SW eight, is that right?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So. Why wouldn't the stormwater fund? Transfer? Because it's confusing to the general fund and we can show it as one project for eight hundred. Isn't that what's going to happen?
The funds are. In this instance, the funds are separate. The stormwater portion is the stormwater portion is being funded because that's where the stormwater. Revenue will fund fund this project. And in IM. Same thing in IM. That's the five, we got the five hundred fifty-one thousand in the general fund to fund.
Yeah, so as we're audited for expenses in the stormwater enterprise fund, we don't, we want to keep them segregated.
Yeah, and that's not uncommon to have two funds funding a project. I mean, and they're two different pots of money because. Specifically, three hundred and one thousand dollars is storm related to stormwater and that's why it's.
And and why is there like the bid process, fifteen hundred? Stormwater fifteen hundred. CIP or IM. Is it in the same bid or the same project?
Overall, Jeff, was she, what she, what she's saying and what she's asking is, go ahead, Tim. Fifteen hundred of a bid portion in the. In stormwater and fifteen hundred were reflecting, we're splitting the bid. For the the project where fifteen hundred is being absorbed in the stormwater and fifteen hundred is being absorbed in the general fund. And so Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tem. Callum's question is.
To go through the bid process costs about fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, so that's my point. It's on both.
We've put it in.
Stormwater and.
Put it in both.
So is it three thousand for the bid or is it?
You complicated on some of the projects, but could be more than fifteen hundred.
Okay.
And we're allotted to split the cost.
Yeah, that I just didn't know if.
Yeah.
Two bids.
But because it's the same amount, yes.
It's just one bid, but it's a moment getting other complicated.
Okay.
Any other questions on Oak Lane? Well, I just wanted to make a point of clarity on Oak Lane with the sidewalks. That was part of a paving project, so we didn't. Include them any of the sidewalk. Discovery.
I was only mentioning that the residents didn't want sidewalks at Oak Lane.
Okay, well. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, maybe anyone from the public has any comment? Not, we can move on there if you're ready.
One comment on sidewalks. How are those new properties able to be built with our ordinance requiring sidewalks on vacant lots without sidewalks?
Dan? Oak Lane.
The. You were. This south side of Oak Lane. That. And arguably an unforgettable property. Coming back three or four years ago, quasi judicial.
Yeah.
Those. Basically every property on the south side.
Um. I'm trying to think. Are you saying that some of those parcels don't have sidewalks?
They don't have.
None of them?
Yeah. And if you don't know, that's okay. I don't want to bog it.
Yeah, I'm not.
But but here's here's my point. It, I like the fact that they were able to opt out. I think that's a good thing and I like the fact that people can say no. As a strategy, it's. Pierce Avenue and there's a Orange or Magnolia, you had to put this whole corner lot of sidewalk. That's a policy initiative I just want to capture. On sidewalks is to me. It's not fair that someone who builds a vacant lot has to build and pay a hundred percent of the sidewalk cost that everyone's going to use, in my humble opinion. Yet these existing properties, when we come through and we say, do you want a sidewalk? And they go, no. And it's, you know, it's just a little unbalanced. So. As sidewalks resurface, no pun intended, we'll. That's something.
Revisit that as a policy direction with B and Z perhaps?
Yeah, I mean, I've I I have worked in places where there's been a similar requirement, but. Say Harbor Heights. No sidewalks.
And it makes sense.
And it doesn't make sense. And so what? Individuals have been allowed to do their choice, build a sidewalk, which goes to nowhere, or. They can contribute to an escrow sidewalk escrow fund. And the city goes into a pot and the city may not and use that in an area. Maybe not Harbor Heights, of course, it wouldn't be in this case, but maybe an adjacent area that we're we're doing a sidewalk project and that could help fund.
A greater need.
Exactly. So that that would be a, I I've seen that done in other places I've I've been located, I've I've worked, so. If the council would like to see something like that, it's currently not allowed in our code, but if if you'd like to see something like that, we can certainly make that happen very quickly.
In this strategy, strategic planning, we've spent some time on sidewalks. Those are the types, that's why I wanted to say is. How can we reorganize the policy, amend it to get sidewalks in the highest critical need areas? Somebody builds on a vacant lot on Monroe Avenue. They have to put this little strip of sidewalk in, yet they would have rather spent the same money and help maybe. Uh, you know, a more critical need area.
Right, understood.
Thank you all.
If we're ready to move on, Mayor?
Looking up a Daniel, nothing, okay? Yeah, so just the the final party, eight hundred thousand dollars. It begins in fall twenty-two, so this summer. Engineering and design complete. When is construction supposed to be complete? Construction begins in the fall. Are we allocating a year for construction?
Jeff?
Actual construction will start next fiscal year, which is the October first.
It'll start then? So this says begins fall twenty twenty-two. Of two thousand twenty-three?
No.
Twenty-two.
Of twenty-two. When do you think it'll be finished?
Four or five months, maybe.
Okay.
I have another question when you're done, Mayor.
I'm done. So the end of the year? Early two thousand twenty-three, okay.
If I if I'm not mistaken, which I could be probably. In last year's budget, wasn't there engineering costs in there to have the engineering done by now and ready for construction in the next?
Yeah, the engineering is probably ninety percent done already. There are a few loose ends to tie in, tie up. It's practically done.
Thank you.
Mayor, ready to move on?
I am. Counsel, good.
All right, Daniel. Next up. The Water Reclamation Facility SCADA system. We are sixty percent complete. We're in progress. There are supply chain issues. Total cost is seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. We will have just about everything on the SCADA system when this is done. Any questions, Mayor?
In this summer, it'll be done and and we've expended. When we're seeing these numbers, just to make sure the seven hundred twenty-three thousand and it says sixty percent complete. I'm assuming a portion of that seven hundred twenty-three spent or is this? Additional funds. The remaining balance, the S to be.
The total project cost.
So out of the seven twenty-three, we've already spent it. This isn't going to be new.
Right.
This didn't take place over one year.
Okay.
Yes, you're you're right. This is the, that's seven twenty-three and let me find it because what I'm doing here while we're talking is this is covered above here, so I've. Answered your question by looking at this year's, by looking what we have next year. But let me, let me look at that for you, but that's. That should be, that should be what's left in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, let's see. So WW nine, the SCADA system in twenty-one, twenty-two. There was an SRF project for three hundred thousand, okay? This is saying that. It started, it's sixty percent complete and behind schedule. So. What that's saying is Jeff, with the three hundred thousand, it's in the current budget. That's the remainder of the seven twenty-three because the sixty percent has been completed already? Yeah, okay. Yeah, so Mayor. Uh, what we're saying is is we we allotted three hundred thousand dollars to.
Our wastewater.
In the current year's budget to complete it. It was a wastewater WW nine CIP for the SCADA system. So. That says it's sixty percent complete here and then we're shown that we have three hundred K in this. This year's budget. When I say this year's budget, I mean this year is not the new budget. Which is roughly forty percent.
It's a bit of a. Thank you.
It covered, because it covered two years. Maybe even a little more.
If I pull out all the summary sheets. And put them together, will that be a quicker way to see these? Because I'm kind of going back and forth. And it's really hard to find these and I'm trying to get a one page view. Like these summary sheets in the CIP.
Right.
If I if I just.
That would be easier for you. Much much easier for you.
Okay, so I'm going to try give that a shot. That way I can follow you.
Right.
A little faster.
Yeah, that's easier for you. And then if we have questions, I like to look at the whole CIP because I can see the details.
Mixer replacements WW nine? Yeah, and you not see SCADA? I don't see SCADA.
Oh, well, Mayor, that's because what's happening here is we're going to review. CIPs for next year. That's the real purpose of what's in this. But your question, based on this particular program, that's right here. In this year's budget, the WW nine is three hundred thousand. But so if you add this year's budget in front of you, you can go to that summary page and that would answer. Because remember, these, some of these things are going to be crossing over two years and.
So the summary sheets for the CIP are ones that you've worked on moving. For next year. These are draft preliminary for twenty-two, twenty-three.
The new CIPs for the review, that was the main intent.
They'll appear in the next budget.
Yeah, appear in the next budget.
So this SCADA is not in there because it'll be done before the fiscal year?
Yes. And 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 that's where it might get a little confusing is these things that are being presented now to council. These programs are programs that, you know, many are already in progress, okay?
Part of doing multiple years of strategic planning is you've got some overlap as things were approved last year, not quite finished. We're just touching on them because we can't forget about them. We still have to finish them. You don't need to rank or score these projects because they're already moving. The ranking and scoring will be done about the new ones, but we also wanted to show the old ones because they are. Part of our strategic plan.
So if there's any more of these slides for these programs, Counsel, please look at your. Current budget book because some of them are, they may be all the in progress and then that will make it less confusing.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else?
Jeff, what else do we have left to put on SCADA after this? These projects, these currently budgeted projects are left? Yes. Two more and they're already moving forward. Okay, thank you. There's no comments from the public. We can move on. Mayor, okay?
Do you know comments?
All right, Daniel, let's move on ahead. Now we're into public works. Galactic Park, we do want to put this one on hold again until two thousand twenty-six because we expect that whatever FDOT does. They're going to need this area for staging for A one A modifications. We want to keep pushing that back a little bit more. Seventy thousand dollars were the anticipated costs. I don't know if that's been adjusted since the first time it appeared, probably two years ago. It may not be realistic anymore, but.
Pushed, it's, yeah, that that might, that, since this is being pushed out till two thousand twenty-six. That's an estimated cost that's been in there for, I guess, the last two years that keeps getting pushed out, so.
And and this is at the 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 southern end of the Cumberland Farms property where we have the, we have the easement, the property there. It's just grass right now. It's reserved for our Galactic Park. Any questions on that one, Mayor?
So it's on hold because A one A needs it or F dot needs it?
F, we anticipate F dot's going to need to use this for staging area because it's right there and it's available.
Okay.
And we've got other priorities.
Absolutely. Counsel, anything on this one? But I mean, we're, this is the further, this is going twenty-six, twenty-seven. Galactic Park. I do not see that. In. The CIP. That we we were provided, if it's going to. If it's gonna be in twenty-six, wouldn't it be in here?
And I believe the reason for that is. It was pushed out. You know what, it was pushed out so much, I did have a discussion with Jim on this, Jim Moore, he's, he's not here tonight, but. Um, and I believe we just did not include it on here because it was pushed so far out. And when me and Jim had our discussion, when we talked about his budget before I left, we were just going to include it when we do the budget, not this budget, but the next one. We could put it in there, but it's, it's so far out, we felt that since it's in the last year, you know. We actually, we don't know if this, this project level materialized. If Council wants this project reflected based on what's being shown here, on hold until twenty twenty-six, and I, and I had this discussion with Jim. We just decided not to put it in the CIPs for that year, but we could put it in there if you want, I could add that, that's not a problem. It's so far out, uh, you know, it may not, we didn't think it was gonna materialize.
Well, the CIP goes twenty-five, it goes to twenty-six, twenty-seven, and so. Where was this last year? I don't have this year's budget.
Uh, let's see.
So I'm in leisure services. I just, and, and the reason I'm asking is because if any projects are gonna fall out from last year, that's really helpful to know. Um, because we pass a budget and then it's like, well, what actually got done and what didn't get done? And, and this is. The summary sheet, oh, at the very beginning, okay, here we go. See, I don't even see it in, in the budget.
Even this, the budget for twenty twenty-one, let me see.
And I, I think we all agree that we don't wanna pursue this, this project, right? I mean, it's, it's be nice to have, it's a, the citizens love these parks, these little pocket parks, but if FDOT needs it. And we're not gonna see it in the next, it sounds like six years would justify it not going in the CIP.
Yeah.
But my bigger issue, issue and concern is. There's this, we, we, it's a bit of a scavenger hunt in these budgets.
Yeah.
And it's really, really stressful when you're looking at last year's budget, and then you go, here's the new one. And you go, well, what disappeared? And you have to go back and forth and back and forth, and so, you know, working towards a one-page view and signaling it fell off. And so that we can see changes, because if we can't measure change, we don't, we don't understand where the needs are. And to say, hey, Galactic Park's not getting done, we budgeted for it last year for these reasons, and so therefore we're gonna push it six years out. That was a lot of work to get to that, but it's, um.
I believe.
Hope that makes sense.
Mayor, I believe what's happened here, and I, I wish Jim, Jim was here because there was discussions on this. I believe it never materialized, and I believe it was, if I recall, was taken completely out of the budget. And it wasn't gonna materialize, and now this shows up here and it just was not added to the new budget, that's, that's what happened. This, this park at one point, I think if we go back a year or so, um, when staff was planning this or whatever. It wasn't gonna happen and may have never, ever gonna happen, it was completely taken off the radar.
Well, it wouldn't.
To my knowledge, that's what happened.
Wouldn't it be reasonable to assume that if we're pushing it back to twenty twenty-six. FDOT comes in to do something, it's going to be pushed even further back.
And I really.
Why doesn't it disappear altogether from our budget?
Yes, and when we had our discussions, when I'm at discussion with the Public Works Director, that's kind of how the conversation went, that, that's why this is. And this is the only place, this is the only project in this entire night you will see like this, because this thing was taken completely out because. It was, it was almost gonna be like something that would never happen.
For this project, I've got the last year's strategic planning, it was last year's strategic planning, the goal of this is to say, hey. Here's a project we discussed of the strategic planning last year, but do you know if that project made the next year's budget? If that's the next year's budget, it did not. And so to me, if it's, it makes sense, we're going over last year's strategic planning items, even though we didn't go into them in the budget.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
That fills the disconnect.
Yes, and it's one of those things that, yeah, may be beyond the five-year horizon, and may, it may only come up in strategic planning every year.
Sure, okay.
But it was taken out because where this, where this was, where this item was, I believe, was in the CRA. Last year, it was in the CRA last year, not here, but last year it was in the CRA, and then it was decided it wasn't gonna happen, and it was completely removed. That's what happened.
So it's on the back burner.
Yeah, now, I will tell Council right now, if they want, um, tomorrow, if you want me to put this. Just because of this slide we're looking at here in twenty twenty-six, I will go do a CIP. Uh, and add, have a CIP that says in twenty twenty-six, we will spend seventy thousand dollars on this project. I could do that, I could do that tomorrow if you would like, and I could add it to your list. When you are giving the final, or proposed budget, or the proposed budget on July first. If, if Council wants to direct me to do that, I will add a CIP.
John, I, I think it doesn't make sense at this point.
I don't, I don't think so either, I, I mean.
Was this in the strategic planning this year? Okay, so here's the, the, the problem, tell me if you disagree. This will never die if we don't kill it right now.
Right.
And I say that respectfully, it sounds evil, I don't mean it that way, but it's.
Zombie park.
Zombie park. It was in last year's strategic planning, I'm looking, I've got last year's book. And because of that, it's in this year's, but it, it wasn't in the budget in between. So if you use the same approach as last year, you're gonna go back and we're gonna be looking at Galactic.
And, and that's a good point, and, and, and Councilmember Willis has a very good explanation of the fact that if that rounds up happens, you won't see this Galactic Park.
Right, so I think we need to strike this out of the.
I, I think that's a wonderful idea, and there's nothing, strike it from the strategic re, planning retreat, there's nothing to strike from the budget because it's not in there.
Yeah, put it on. In a.
I think that's.
I don't mind bringing it up every single year, the strategic planning retreat, but I don't know if we need an update on it in this meeting.
Yeah.
If, if that's what the council decides to do, it's gonna have to revisit the flats, because I think there's a dedicated. Dedic, dedication to the city on the, on the. So we can do it, but there's, there's gonna be some.
Well, if it's six years out.
We're not saying we're never gonna put a park there, we're just saying it's not in the five-year horizon.
In the next sixty months, we don't want to be in this meeting next year, or that, do we want to talk about this at next year's strategic planning?
I, I don't.
Well, I mean, FDOT might make the decision.
Consensus is to not add this to the CIP. Consensus is to remove this from the purview of the strategic planning retreat.
Right.
Mayor, um, we're recording consensus to not add Galactic Park to the CIP. And to strike it from future, uh, strategic planning retreats.
Yes, until as something changes.
Might be a new initiative then.
And we trust that staff will, it needs to be captured somewhere.
Yeah.
Um, and, and considered, but.
Yeah.
No, no, agreed on what you just said, in, in my opinion. We don't want to have it in next year's strategic or.
Do we have a time capsule we can open in twenty twenty-seven?
Yeah.
It's a future park.
This is a Star Wars item, Mayor, and I think you really need to.
Okay.
If that applies to any other projects, try to let us know front and we won't have to.
I don't think this is gonna happen any other place tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, we're ready to proceed.
Yep, let's go.
Daniel. Sanitary sewer GIS mapping, uh, this is something that is, I'm sorry, we have a comment.
Oh, okay, come on up. Yes, and feel free to just approach the, approach, and we'll make sure you're recognized.
From the residents' perspective, if I could, at least from one resident, I think where we get a little bit confused is the. Big picture planning for parks in the city, as you know, this is something as you all acknowledged. Is a value for the community to have green space and opportunities for, you know, preserving, you know, selected lands for that purpose. Um, maybe that's a shared funding arrangement, such as you all talked about on Center Street or whatever. But I think what worries me is that when we say, okay, we'll take it out of the strategic retreat, I'm not sure what that does to it in the big picture planning. And it's, as I think you were mentioning, you want to capture it somewhere, otherwise it's communicating to the community. That we may not be valuing the, this particular park or parks overall, I just don't know. This is where, again, the big picture planning for the city, I think would be helpful to us, to sort of see where does this park fit into the bigger picture of parks? And then what is it that DOT is doing that would keep us from proceeding, that's a concern to us, I think if that's the area where I think it is. You know, there's just a lot of community concern about, um, what DOT is doing on A1A anyway. And then to put this off, again, it just causes at least, from what I'm hearing, some confusion about where we see this. As one of the many parks that I hope that we'll be planning for the community, just an observation and concern.
Agreed, but we trust that you'll capture this.
Yeah.
And it won't fall through the cracks.
And also, Gustavo, uh, this would be a good thing to put on your Culture and Leisure Services Board. Um, this discussion item that we have with Council, that we don't want to lose sight of this, it's just outside of the horizon of a five-year CIP. It is a future park property, it's designated for that, um, so let's make sure your board is aware of that as well.
And while he's coming up, FDOT is paying us an option payment to tie that land up, right?
I haven't heard that.
Well, I, I'm teasing, but at the same time, it's like.
Yeah, okay, ready to move on, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sanitary sewer GIS mapping, this comes from a state mandate, June, I can let you talk to this if there's any questions. Uh, we're ninety-eight percent complete, phase one, uh, that it maybe, maybe is complete, June, uh, we're ready. Very close, okay, and closest, starting phase two was next.
We haven't done, got the software back.
Okay.
So we gotta get the digital, and, uh, that's it. They located, uh, four hundred and thirty-seven manholes, which we thought we only had three hundred fifty.
How many?
Four hundred and thirty-seven, and, uh, I think four hundred and one were cities and thirty-six were private. We found a lot more than we thought we had.
Some of them were covered up.
Oh, they were covered up by someone who's three foot.
Yeah, so this is an update, update item, Mayor, um, it was on a previous retreat.
Nice job getting it done, or almost done, final stretch here.
And if there's no public comment, and we're, we're ready to move on, Mayor, we can advance.
Looks like we're good.
Okay, let's go ahead, Daniel. So SO two conversion, uh, five percent complete, anticipated cost sixty-five thousand dollars, it is behind schedule. This is, uh, SRF funded, um, that it's updating to a new technology from the dechlorination system. Uh, waiting on, uh, water reclamation facility building to be completed prior to doing this, so we're looking at, um. June, what's the, what's the realistic timeframe on this?
The structures? We're waiting for the structures. Because that's the first building we're gonna do, and to give you a little bit of history on this, uh, back to December second, two thousand seventeen. That's when we had a spill, we had the fire department come over, and we had to call Red Tag to come and put a coffin over one of our containers. And we decided at that point with EPA that we would use the system, which is liquid and it's not as dangerous. So it can't, it's not a gas.
But is it still realistic, say it'll be done this fiscal year?
I think Jeff said probably not until October next year, am I wrong? Won't be, okay.
Okay, so, okay, and, and this is an update item again, Mayor, from last year's retreat. It's just behind schedule, is our only report on that.
It's sixty-five thousand dollars, when I'm looking at the capital improvement plan, I see five thousand is the only amount in twenty-four, twenty-five.
I think it was in last year's budget, the sixty-five thousand.
So was sixty-five spent already?
Excuse me, sir, the sixty-five thousand is in this year's budget, it's right here and it's in WW twenty, okay? And supposedly it's supposed to be done, just like the slide says, this year, and then where the mayor's looking, WW eighteen, uh. You've, uh, Public Works has put five thousand dollars in twenty-four, twenty-five, and WW eighteen. That's the only place these disappears, so disappears, so sixty-five thousand is this year, it's in this year's budget. And then what happens in, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five. Says here, replace outdated dechlorination system.
Okay, so what we, what we just heard tonight, though, it will not be done this fiscal year.
Oh, okay, and, but in the future, for what's in the budget right now, is they will replace an outdated dechlorination system, right?
Okay, so yeah, if we had the twenty-one, twenty-two column, we would be able to see this year's, but we can only see forward, and then we gotta go back to the budget to see it. So with that being said, the sixty thousand, which is, what, what year does that go to? Next, next year, since it's, it's in this year's budget, it's not happening, we just heard.
Yeah, it's gonna roll forward into the next year.
Forward, so it will go into twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Is that what you're telling me, June, it's going into twenty-two, twenty-three, cause I. Okay, so then this WW, uh.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, that needs to be updated, so we'll update that and put a dollar figure in there on what it's gonna cost, okay? You could just give us a new, give us a new CIP tomorrow, thanks.
Okay, that'll take care of that, thank you. Um, Mayor, anything else on this one?
No, sir, I see no comments, we can move on.
Daniel, let's move ahead, I think, uh, fence replacement, or we got, Canaveral City Park, okay. Canaveral City Park, um, we are behind schedule, ninety percent completed, um, I think most of you have toured the multi-generational facility. If you haven't, we'd be happy to get you in there. The, um, temporary CO was issued, Gustavo substantial completion date certificate was today. Yesterday. What's left is, um, pretty much paint touch-ups and then the splash pad. And that's, we're looking at probably another five weeks out on that.
Yeah, uh, splash pad work starts tomorrow, I mean, Monday.
Okay.
I'm already in Tennessee.
Um, so with the parking is done. Um, landscaping, it looks pretty much done to me.
Yeah, uh, well, no, uh, due to this, do, we're, we're working on a variance with, uh, Florida Department of Health. And so the landscaping was held off, uh, it will start again next week. Uh, just specifically around the area of the splash, but in particular, we had to make some changes there.
Right.
Uh, but yeah, the big trees and all that is done, they're just working on the irrigation.
Okay, so Mayor, this is another update item, ninety percent completed, um, we're looking at a, a soft opening very quickly here. And in the coming month or two, a grand opening after the splash pad is done. So again, this is just an update item.
Yes, so we're not gonna see this in the CIP because it'll be done in this fiscal year.
You're, you're gonna see the playground in next year's CIP. That's the last kind of phase of the project, if that was what the question is.
Okay, and that's called. Canaveral City Park infield retrofit? I'm trying to find it.
Different CIP, you're, you're gonna see a lot of CIPs for this place, because we're still.
So, so that Patriots, the playground you're talking about is not in this.
It's part of Canaveral City Parker Development, so it's part of this year's fiscal budget as far as a projection for next year. And next fiscal year, you're gonna see it for next fiscal year, but right now, if you look at this year's budget for Canaveral City Parker Development. It'll be on the twenty-two, twenty-three under that year.
I'm looking at the twenty-two, twenty-three CIP that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's CR one in the CRA, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, CR one.
C R A.
In the C R A, that, that's what Gustavo's talking about, the remainder is, it's in the C R A.
I, I would love to be able to account for these in the leisure services, if there's any way we can get out of C R A. Because that's very confusing to the residents, um, if that makes sense, it's, C R A is like a.
Well, it's a C R A project, so.
Yeah, I understand, like, C R A funded, but does it have to be budgeted? I mean, we can keep it this way, but does it make one sense what I'm saying is? The C R A, it's a leisure services, I, I look at C R A as a, as a funding source. Just like all of them are funding source, and so I see it here, Canaveral City Park redevelopment, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is the, is what you were just talking about.
The playground, right.
Okay, and so my question is, the, and then the Canaveral City Park ballfield lights, the Canaveral City Park concession. And then in the general fund, we have the Canaveral City Park infield retrofit, which is like twenty three, five. Right?
Yeah.
And that's, that is, that's all.
I mean, I, I didn't necessarily look into, just because I thought that was more of a renew and replace project. That's why I didn't request that be in the C R A, because the C R A is for expanding. Uh, and there's no expansion within the retrofit of the ballfield, it's just more of a renew and replace expenditure. Yeah, and it's, it's correct the way it's represented, but the, the mayor brings up a very good point, but, but unfortunately, mayor, we can't. Uh, portray it like that in the budget, but you bring up a good point, if somebody's looking at that and says, hey, that's a leisure services thing. How come I just can't look under leisure services? Well, it's because the funding of it, it, the, the budget's set up by funds and.
Yeah.
Those projects are in the fund, that fund.
I, I understand.
But it could be, it could be confusing to the uh, the resident, yes, agreed.
Got it, okay, so the six point eight, five million dollars, how much of that? Have we spent all of that money? I guess, are these projects here that we're seeing a part of those funds, or this six point eight is for the multi-generational facility?
The side improvements you see.
And, and the splash pad, so that's, it says anticipated cost.
And.
All, all these other projects are additional money, not that, okay? And do you know where, so this mu, these funds will be finished when the splash pad's done essentially?
Yeah.
That'll be the last.
Yeah, and the bathroom and the rest of the side and all that.
Do you know where we are right now with the project costs?
Yes. So the multi-generational facility, we've been billed about. Four point nine million dollars approximately, uh, that we've actually paid out. The project is gonna cost just under six point one million. Then you have the splash pad, it's five hundred thousand, so take the six point one and the five hundred thousand for the splash pad. Get you to about six, six. We had a, the fence as well, which is in progress fencing.
Mm-hmm.
That was part of the redevelopment for this year's budget, and so we, so far, we're able to do the Little League outfield. And I don't know if you've driven by it, but it's a big, beautiful, you know, it looks bright, you know, the facility itself. And uh, we were gonna do uh, the playground fencing, so the green fence that's temporary right now. That's all gonna get replaced, uh, hopefully within the end of the fiscal year. As well as the interior that is now softball and they're still using for construction fencing. That's coming down and we may realize some savings in that by doing some of that in-house, because we've decided to do um, uh. One rail, uh, recycled lumber fencing rather than aluminum. So towards the end of the fiscal year, there should be some savings in that.
Got it.
So.
So six point six.
Mm-hmm.
Out of the six point eight five is what we're saying, so there's gonna be funds left over.
Well, you know, if, that would be nice, mayor, but we gotta see what the project is, and as long as nothing. Out of the way happens, that would be great.
Well, as of today, your best guess is it looks like we, two hundred thousand dollars roughly.
Well, it, that's a, that's a, that's a budgeted thing, the actual cost could be just six, six, six. You know, a budget is the estimate, the actuals are, the actual.
But I'm saying, we look like we're going to come under the budget.
Yes.
We, we, we have a ma, uh, we have a guaranteed maximum price.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I mean, six point six for, six point six for the M G F and the splash pad. Is there anything additional to that?
To what's budgeted?
No, so the, the beauty of budgeting is, the key is always, you aim to come lower. And you're crucified if you go over. And that's what I always aim at, and, and so that small change, for example, that I'm saying in, in staff doing the interior fence, you know? That's within ten of hopefully saving some money in the project and, you know, honestly, it's, it's hard to even get a fence company to call you back right now. So that's a little bit why we've decided to take that on. I can't give you an exact figure as to at the end of the day, what will come out.
The mayor, the mayor's looking for you to answer this question, when it's, when it was all said and done, we will be under the anticipated cost of six eight five five. We expect to be.
That's right. Yes. And that's all I can put my foot on right now.
Yeah, yeah, that was it, I guess I'm looking at six point eight and I'm going, we're ninety percent complete. This is kind of the moment we've been waiting for, looks like we're at about six point six, maybe there's a little bit more.
And that's, yeah, that's poss, that's possible, yes. Yes, but I can't say, oh yeah, there's a couple hundred thousand left over, I, you know, can't say that.
Well, as of right now, there's money left over, I mean, you, unless you.
I, I think.
There has to be, unless you.
It's a little more, I know, but it's a little more complex than that, because, because we have a. We have a Cape Center that we're building also this year. And those projects kind of come.
Under one contract.
Under one contract, so where we might make up a hundred and some thousand dollars for the M G F. We may have, well, I could tell you that the hundred and some thousand dollars is gonna be needed for the Cape Center. Because when you put the two of them together, six point one and what's the Cape Center, one point, one point seven? You're talking about, about seven point, um, seven point uh, eight million for both.
So, so far, we're, everything's going very well with W and J and the contract and the guaranteed maximum price. I don't expect any hiccups on that.
And what, so we're under the G M P?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and that's where it gets confusing, cuz there's two projects going on here.
Yeah, but I mean, we, we measure them per project, I understand how the contracts go, but if some. We budgeted six point one million to do phase one of this project, is that right?
Well, for the, for the M G F's completion based on the contract, it's six point one million. Yes.
And so now we've seen this number going, it looks like it's gonna be six point eight. Now this is making sense, so the six point eight is over by seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, we call that the anticipated cost when we started.
Your pause now makes sense, I didn't realize that, that this number, see, we can't, this is what, the things that. It's a scavenger hunt, because now I gotta go to the budget book and see, it would be nice if we could see, hey, you originally budgeted six point one million. We're currently at six point eight five million, we anticipate another two hundred thousand with the completion date on this. That's a lot of work to find that information out for us up here, and it's really, really challenging. It, it, and to me, it's a three column table, um, I'm borrowing Don's book, uh, excuse me, Councilman Willis, and, and going, and.
Well, that's because these projects are taking place over multiple years. I mean, we've had expenses on the, on the M G F for the last two years, uh, you know, so. This is a continual process to get to the end, and the good thing is, is Cape Center and the M G F will be done in this year, hopefully. And uh, we won't have to labor about the expenses, because we will have paid the entire bill. But it does get confusing and, um, you know, I mean, we're talking tonight a, about things happening now. And things happening next year and things continuing, and as you saw, Jeff's got a project, or Public Works got a project over there that. Can't get the materials or something, and now we gotta push that out, that happens all the time.
In, in the future, can we, on a slide such as this, have the original. Information, where we are today and when it's going to be completed? I mean, just, just where we started, where we are, where we hope to be.
Yes, we could do that, and you know what, uh, so I think the good thing is, is when you have a workshop like this. These are the things that we're working out, because the last time we had a workshop like this, since I've been with the city, is never.
Well, I mean, it, I, I think we would move a lot faster.
Yes.
And it says in our code that um, you know, the budget activities for the ensuing year. Except as required by law, on this charter shall be in such form as the city manager deems. Desirable, or the city council may require an effective management and understanding of the relationship between the budget. And the city, city strategic goals, so that's something we need to work on too, I think.
Well, I think that that's, I think that that's happening right here in this book, that's happening with.
But we don't have.
The mayor pro tem.
Well, we're just telling you, we don't, we can't see, we don't understand.
Right, what's lacking is in this.
That's a problem.
Right, in this forum, if we're gonna have this forum and workshop, then we need to have those things that you're talking about. So that's what we need to do next time, is have those things in front of you like that, but in terms of. You know, what the city manager must have to meet the, these, this is a very comprehensive book. But in terms of the spend rate on projects that go over every couple of years. That's where we can go ahead and provide data for you, because then you could kind of see how things are rolling.
If project, I don't know if we have a spreadsheet with every project, the project management. Dashboard, do we have like one spreadsheet with just every project in one, one row, one column?
No, every, everything is.
You can't just look at one page and go, here's every single project, next column is project start date. Next pro, column is project target completion date, next column is actual, next project is budgeted amount. Next column is total spend, like five, I mean, that right there would make this meeting fly.
You would have to, you could, you'd have to run a program, say out of our software system, that might be able to accommodate that. It's the first time it's being asked.
I just said, you, I have a template created, it's not anything, but I'll send it to you. I know we can do it.
Makes sense.
It, and it's, it is to make us faster.
Yeah, it, it may require an extra day for you, but we'll get out of here a little earlier.
So, yeah. Let's keep moving with what we have, you gotta work with worn out tools, we got this, let's go.
And it's the first time workshop for us, so we're, we're learning the bugs. Okay, I think we're ready to move on, uh, Daniel. Oh, sorry question.
Yes. What do you have in your hand as far as pages? What? What, do you have um, something printed with you, I just want, when you're asking the page, I've got like three different books up here, and so. Okay. So.
I think she's looking at C I Ps.
The C I P, so the greatest, there are no page numbers on C I Ps, but if you're looking at it, what we've been using. As a unique identifier is where it says like C I P number up at the top right. It'll say the, the um, the fund acronym, so this is the accounting code. F R, or which is like fire rescue one, so when you hear us to say F R one, um. C R one, I M one, S W one, those are acronyms for the fund with the number of the capital project. So I think that's the, for the rest of the meeting, we'll try to state that number if we are looking at the same document.
And. And if, and if I may, mayor.
Oh, yeah.
What's, what's confusing, I'll tell you what's confusing is, if we were going just for the C I P book, you'd be right online. You'd see that the mayor would be going boom, 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 boom. But what they've put here is these are the projects that were identified in the strategic retreat, that were pulled.
Right.
On their own, and the city manager is covering those first, so that's where it's a little bit, a little bit tricky.
Yeah, there's two, there's two halves of this meeting.
That's, that's the thing, we're in the first half.
Reviewing the projects, and then C I Ps was meant to be second, but we're, we're, we're bringing them all together. And it's why we're doing a lot of cross referencing.
Yeah, I understand that, okay.
Okay, Civic Hub uh, is the next one, um, this was a very dramatic item over the last year or two. Uh, involved the purchase of the property at seventy four oh four North Atlantic Avenue, which uh, city did close on that property. Um, the demolition um, bids are due May first. The day of, May second, um, so we'll have a, a reading of those bids and then we'll proceed from there. Uh, the Civic Hub also includes um, the, the closing of Taylor Avenue. At A one A, just like we did for Polk Avenue at, for City Hall. Um, that makes that whole street tailor, that, that west end of Taylor. Close and safer for public events such as the Friday Fest events and the other events we might wanna have there. But also extends the City Hall Plaza thematically through that property where we bought the uh, United Agency Building. Through this Taylor Avenue, continuing through into eligible spaces that include the. The racquetball court, which we believe is nearing its useful, ending of its useful life. Um, the underutilized shuffleboard courts. Um, so that's kind of the canvas that the Civic Hub create is, is, has got to work with. Obviously, this will be through um, public input meetings, uh, where we'll wanna master plan the entire thing. Um, how big do we want this to be, how much do we want it to cover up? We've got, this is our palette, doesn't mean we have to use all of it, but it's, it's, let's think about it while we're doing this. We, we don't think we wanna, there's any appetite to do anything with the Nancy Hansen facility per se, possibly, I'm not sure. Um, but definitely the tennis courts, pickleball and everything that's kind of sacred in this community, we're not touching any of that. So that's, that's the extent of the, the, the palette, and then we've got to uh, master plan the entire thing. And we understand now that council's definitely interested in a stormwater vaulted system in that whole area, which is. Depending on how big it gets, it could be up three to four acres of, of additional stormwater in that, which I think is fantastic, so. The, the plan is to break the Civic Hub into two fiscal years. The, from here going forward, uh, this next, this next fiscal year will include the master planning. Of the Civic Hub and the public engagement that that entails. And then the stormwater component, so if we, if we could get all that done in the next fiscal year, that would be fantastic. The following fiscal year would be what I'm gonna call the vertical improvements of the Civic Hub. If there's an entertainment stage or whatever other type of structures, um, we wanna put out there, solar lights, benches, bollards, pavers. Who, who knows uh, what all it's gonna entail, the, the design process will, will flesh that out, so. Uh, that's a long way to say, um, we uh, we have a debt service uh, through the C R A. Uh, purchase price is nine hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. I also wanted to mention um, the concept of universal design, we haven't talked about that a whole lot yet here, but I wanna talk about it here. Universal design is a fairly new concept, new to us for sure. Where it talks about all facilities being able to be used by all people of any, of any abilities. So that will go above and beyond an A D A code. Uh, and we'd like to make this project the showcase for universal design. And I would like to talk further, and this is something that Councilmember Davis has brought up to us. Um, something that she cares deeply about, and we all do, is accessibility for people of, of any, any disability level. So we wanted, one of the things that we expect that she's gonna wanna continue champion is. Universal design in all of our projects that we go forward with in the future. But I think the Civic Hub is a great place to kick that off. Um, we will be seeking funds through the C R A, obviously, um, Indian River Lagoon for the stormwater impacts that we do. And wastewater and stormwater enterprise funds and uh, it's our total one point three million dollar estimated. Three to five year completion project, so I'm hopeful, maybe. three to five year completion project. So I'm hopeful, maybe I'm a little optimistic that it's going to be a two-year project. But, uh, to take Gustavo's mantra, you're better to under promise and over deliver. So it's probably more likely a three-year project. No questions on that?
So you're, you're saying we would basically go in with the stormwater issue and next year?
The, the, the first construction item should be the stormwater part.
Okay.
But the, the first phase of it would be the master planning.
On storm, I mean, two things, a hundred percent agree on access, um, for everyone with, uh, Councilmember Davis. That's, you know, it's like these, these boxes you check when you're doing a project. Sustainable, usable, testable for everybody. And when we think about the, those people with mobility issues or whatever their challenges are, I don't think it inhibits anyone else, you know, but when we design it for us and not for them, it actually does inhibit them. So 36 inch ADA wide sidewalks are, are corners and curves and elevators or whatever the, is I think a good thing. So you're here to that. And as far as the, um, the, the point that, uh, Councilmember Willis brought up about that the projects is just from a strategy and a policy standpoint, both of those are good policy design land use initiatives to say that any public property developing, you know, must or shall be, um, ADA accessible. I mean, put that pressure on ourselves, set the, set the benchmark high and also shall attempt to do some sort of underwater stormwater. You know, we don't handcuff ourselves to where we have to, but we at least agree to invest into some sort of cost. And that way we know, give a requirement to look into this and give it a shot. Um, and ultimately council can make a decision, but I think that those are both great in the promenade. You know, that Civic Hub property can be, like you said, the first. When I'm looking at the, um, the budget here, uh, last year's, I think we budgeted 900,021 for this year. Where we are now, 2122. We've obviously got the loan for 1.3.
1.2 million.
1.2 million. Okay. We've spent the 925 to acquire the property.
Yes.
There, I would imagine there's more that's been spent. The development costs, the engineering, the asbestos, the in-phase, the closing cost, all of those. And so maybe there's a little money left over in the loan funds, maybe not.
Demolition.
Demolition, right. And so that includes purchase price, cost of demolition, demolition, asbestos removal. But then.
That sucks most of it up right there.
So we went technically over, which I'm fine with, I'm just, we went over budget for this year for the Civic Hub, and we need to make it up somewhere else. Is that fair?
Well, I think.
If we've only budgeted 900,000.
We, we, that's right. When the project was originally looked at, we had 900,000 for this year and 800,000 for the next year. I think if we, if we look at that, right? And so, um, we go out and get a 1.2 million dollar capital note.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, yes, the, uh, so the building in the, ends up costing, we had estimated 900K and the building ends up costing 925K in the end.
Mm-hmm.
And the intent was, is that we didn't know where, you know, exactly, exactly where we'd land, but we knew we needed, the city needed at least 1.2 million to do the, to buy the building, to demolish the building, to do the closing, to do the asbestos. So that's, you know, that's where we.
Wasn't the 900,000 established prior to the negotiations with the seller?
Of course, of course it was. And that's, so, you know, we never, you know, uh, we had anticipated 900K, but that platform changed. Go ahead.
Well, no, I think you guys had some idea of the pricing, Dave, when you came into the strategic planning. I mean, he wanted a lot, but when y'all came out, you got the appraisal and y'all, and y'all hit the ground running. And it came in 925. I mean, that's not.
Right.
A huge difference. I mean, the council said 900, you come in at 925 is, but, so I, I understand that. I'm just trying to make sure I understand how this project is tracking and how the numbers change. So it's eight, we, we, we've pulled in 1.2 in, in, in money to, to fund that acquisition. Out of the 1.2, do we roughly know what's left over? Rough estimate, is there 100,000 left over?
Right now I have $200,000 left.
Okay. So there's 200,000 left and then, but we've already paid for the asbestos.
A survey, not the removal.
Okay, understood. So, so we need $200,000 to catch back up.
Right. But we haven't paid for the demolition yet.
Demolition will include the asbestos.
And I have no idea exactly.
Okay. So the, the quotes you're going to get for the demo are going to, okay, got it. And, and then the next year.
Whatever left will go in the next year with that, uh, now we got 1.3, uh, well, remaining for the next two years on CR2 and the CIPs will be 1.3 million dollars to complete the project.
Okay.
Next year, we're saying we're going to spend five, we anticipate that we'll spend $500,000 in design, community input and redevelopment.
Okay. Got it. So I'm, I'm tracking. And if Councilmember Willis asks this, will the stormwater retention in Councilmember Davis's ADA, did you go over this? Well, is that included in the budget for the cost? I don't know if it's a significant increase.
No, that, that, that had was never, that was, that was considered after the fact.
Oh, no.
That was after.
Yeah.
The fact, but, um.
The stormwater is going to be a big jump. I don't think ADA, well, I guess elevators.
Well, it's ADA plus.
Yeah.
It's, it's universal design.
So it'll be.
ADA plus. It's more, more than required. Gustavo, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, obviously, uh, universal design will be part of the master planning of the whole facility. So when we bring on a, an architect to design the thing once, we've reached out to the public and we're going to hire obviously the same architectural firm to help develop all the surveys. And just like you did with the, uh, street master plan where the community gets together and they decide on elements and all that. From that, they develop a plan. That's the approach we're going to use for this project as well. So community room from the beginning. So as you're saying, the ADA, uh, part of the whole thing will just be part of the design. Uh, it doesn't necessarily have to add or take away any cost from the project. Stormwater will also be taken up as part of the design of the whole thing. So when you're looking at next year's budget, that's what's being proposed is the 150 for the design to include all the, uh, public input and participation. And then we're estimating as of right now, the 300 and.
50,000.
50 for the underground of stormwater should we need it to go with construction next fiscal year right off the bat.
So last question, total cost according to the budget plus, plus what we've already spent is what? As, and I know this can change.
No, you, you're.
Is it 1.3? No, I'm talking about like.
He's talking about the whole thing, 2.5 million dollars. The 1.2 million.
Stormwater?
Um, does, does this?
It would include stormwater.
Does this include stormwater in this description in CR2?
Are you asking me whether or not it includes stormwater funds or includes?
The exfiltration.
Yes, it would include that.
The two and a half million would include the exfiltration.
Yeah.
And the ADA.
Of course, yeah.
Design standards.
Yeah.
Okay.
And an amazing looking A1A front.
But this one.
Better be.
Yeah.
This one's kind of crossing multiple years. This was started in previous retreat, came to this retreat. It'll be a next year's retreat. It's going to span three to four years before this whole thing is done.
And as costs go up, staff will be looking very carefully and strategically at using ARPA funds to supplement this program if need be, because we're under the standard deduction. So we could use these funds, um, for the stormwater and what have you.
And, and because we are looking at it not only, uh, improving the sense of place, but it bringing actual tourism events to the community, that's where we're going to go after the TDC. They always come to us and say, hey, we have this facilities grant, uh, for building facilities that support tourism in the area. Well, we have a zoo, we have hotels, we have everybody on A1A, so we're going to go after TDC to assist in buildings.
And, um, I, I think we're almost done with this one, but Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to branch off topic just for a moment because John mentioned ARPA funds. Jeff had some recent correspondence from DEP on the, um, the deep well injection. Can you bring that up, Jeff, and tell the council what you've learned about that?
Yeah, we submitted a plan last October in response to Senate Bill 64, which basically said you cannot discharge unused reclaimed water to a surface water body. However, there were a few outs in there for smaller communities, if you're AWT, which is what we are. So we submitted our report and I'll cover. We got a letter yesterday from DEP. They've approved our report. So that means we don't have to, uh, construct the deep injection well.
So we, we, that, that is a huge win. Um, we, we were looking at $10 million plus down the road for that. So what we qualified was what's called wet weather discharge, which means there's only going to be a little bit, and we already only do a little bit to the lagoon, but only when there's wet weather. Um, so it's a qualification category that we qualified for, and now we don't have to do the deep well.
And, and if I may add for some good news, if anybody wants good news, uh, is that, so initially when we thought we were going to do this and we presented what the ARPA funds could be used, but in November and council looked at it and recommended and gave us a, an okay or whatever, based on what Jeff just said, that frees up $289,000 to be used elsewhere. Like maybe the stormwater, uh, project that Councilmember Willis had, uh, talked about over here at, uh, at Pub. So that freed up $289,000 to be spent maybe on other stormwater projects in the city. So that was very good news today. Actually, that's the best news I got probably in the last.
Some celebrating in the halls upstairs.
Yeah, there was big time celebrations today. Yeah, big time.
There are a few things we're going to have to do, but, uh, for instance, we need to find more users of our reclaimed water. So we've got 10 years to do that. This bill doesn't really kick in for 10 years. So there are some things we have to do. We have to get a permanent modification for the plant. Stuff that we can do, you know, fairly easily, but we really need to find somewhere to get rid of unused reclaimed water. So we're working on it.
Aquarium.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
I mean, for the.
Who knows? Yeah.
Well, we're talking to Fort Canaveral. They've got a lot of empty property up there.
And I think the mayor came up with the idea for the aggregate piles possibly. Was it you, Mayor, that said that? Somebody suggested the aggregate piles that are up there could.
Yeah, we could always look at the, uh, the aquarium. I'm sure they'll have a lot of plants, a lot of trees.
Yeah.
So we've got 10 years to figure it out.
If that can become a customer or.
So just a little side note, there's some good news since we started talking ARPA funds.
Wonderful news, actually, yeah.
And we can move on, marriage.
And when we were talking about buying the hub and all that and the financing, uh, it was on the sources and used a statement, we had a grant funding for 285,475. Did we get that grant funding or is that something that's?
The, I, I don't, we're talking about for the, what?
For the Civic Hub.
For the Civic Hub. Well, the grant funding is, no, well, we didn't get that yet, no. Because the, we're, that's reflected in CR2 of the CIPs is 500K in grant funding is, is to occur in 2324. Yeah, that's the TDC facilities grant. That's 500,000.
Count on that, of course.
That's, no, I mean, they're, they're just projections.
But that's what's projected.
And, and Indian River Lagoon grant funding as well.
Part of the funding sources for the project.
You mean the overall?
Yeah, the 285,475. Did we apply for that grant? Did we get the grant?
No, no, I mean, this, this, this project needs to first actually be approved. They require that usually. And as far as the, the money, where you would be matching, right? Because, uh, as you can see, you have the initial 150 and 350 for design. And, uh, so that's where the match comes in. Um, but no, we.
It was part of the total funding.
Yeah, with Councilmember.
I mean, just like we did for Patriots, right? I applied for a, a, a FERDA grant. And we expect, we always expect to get it, but whether it happens or not. And, and if it doesn't happen, then we may have to revise the scope of what we're doing at that time. But these are just projections, you know?
But Mayor Pro Tem, I do understand your question, and that's what Gustavo's trying to say is that's actually what you're talking about. It's happening later on. The first part of the project was buying the building, demolition the building. But that grant you're talking about, I, I know what you're saying, is that's, that's in the next phase to get the grants now. Because the 1.2 million is what we needed to buy the building and.
Thank you.
And, and I want to take a break, but I just want to point out, and please, this is me just sharing a history briefly of what happened. I am holding the strategic planning book of last year. This was the moment when we were presented this opportunity for the first time. It says that this will be a 1.6 million dollar project. To the pitch that we just heard last week, this is the first time we're sitting there, we hear 1.6, it says, the property was recently insulted, but requires to purchase the property. He bought it for 750,000 and would sell it to the city for 900,000. So you, we did know according to this what was going on. An updated appraisal would reveal its current value. We get the appraisal, we realize it was much lower. He negotiated up to 925. But the point I want to make is that for land acquisition and site design and site development, we were told that this was going to be a 1.6 million dollar project. And today, we are seeing a two and a, almost a million dollars more. And so accountability has to come in at some point for us. We can go forward with the 2.5, but at some point we need to feel this. We need to ask ourselves, are we willing to, you know, what can we do differently? So I appreciate, and it talks about grants in here, grants, grants. And so I would say that we need to, as a council, draw the line at some point and go, you know what? We agreed to 1.6. Let's say when you get to 1.6, we've got it. If you're going to, if we're going to go to 1.5, we need to go out and get those grants to make up the difference. Or, or other, other things. And of course, or just spend it all. But I mean, these are trade-offs, these are opportunities. And so when I talk about things changing, I'm so thankful I have this book because when we stand here today, that's how fast in a year, not even a, yeah, well, I guess it's a year. This is mission creep. It starts to grow. And then what are the actual costs of when it's actually done? Is this going to end up being a 3.2 million dollar proj, project? And then when we go back three years and we go, what happened there? It doubled. So no sweat. I understand inflation, I understand, but we at least need to go, guys, this is increasing and we need to be made aware of that because that's a big increase. And that, those funds can be used for our first responders, for sustainability projects. We could electrify our whole fleet with that money overnight. We could do a lot of great things. We could hire key personnel. We could ADA the, the important parts of the city. And so that's a lot of money in a, in a half acre parcel. Point four acres is going to pull in 2 and a half million dollars. That might be the most dense, rich property in this city.
Well, but you also have to put it in the context that it, there was change in there because we're adding the stormwater issue. We're trying to answer the flooding issue for other people.
Okay, fair.
And, you know, that.
Expanding the footprint as well. It's not just that half acre, 0.43 acre parcel.
Uh.
It's for the.
The two and a half is the whole property?
Yeah.
That, that part that Gustavo had presented?
The Civic Hub is, that, that property is 0.4. The civic hub is, that, that property is 0.43, I believe.
Right.
Right. 0.43 acres.
So we're saying.
We're saying that it, it's a good idea to master plan it all the way through the Nancy Hansen. That's what we're talking about.
So this was my confusion in the last meeting, we're now, we're expanding within this project, we're not creating a new project. We're basically expanding the scope as council.
The civic hub was always imagined to be a larger project than just this building. This building was the thing we had to get out of the way so we could do it.
So the portion of the building might still be roughly 1.6, and what we're saying is, I'm just giving rough numbers, another million bucks is going to go to do the stormwater.
And redevelop the whole area.
Part of it is.
Yes.
Understood. That's why we need workshops. Well, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry about that. I didn't mean to.
That was a good question. Thank you.
Can we take a break? Are y'all okay with that?
Thank y'all.
Was that the last slide?
There's no votes.
It's not like.
You gotta vote.
All right, we're gonna get started back here. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I think we're done with the heaviest items of the retreat. There's several more to do, but I don't think they're gonna be as intense as the last ones we've been through. So, we'll start with this next one. Veterans Memorial Park, this is also an updated one that was approved at the last strategic planning retreat. Anticipated cost of $410,000. The construction documents are completed. Gestapo, that was two public meetings, three public meetings, I think, for that one. And the community decided what they wanted, the council decided what they wanted. The design is done, we've got the permits from St. John's. The bidding process is scheduled to begin in July or end in July. Okay, and then completion, phase two, scheduled for October 22. Talk about the phases there.
It's almost divided between the north and south sides of the park. So, phase one will be the northern side where the existing monument is the the concrete, that's pebbled concrete, that's all gonna be probably, I think, paved versus what the design called out for. It's gonna create connectivity between the library, the northern entrance area of the library with a small kind of footbridge over the dry retention area into added pedways, and then phase two will concentrate on the southern part, which will be the gathering place with a small playground and expanded pedways.
Okay, and project completion scheduled for December of '22, January '23, they're still on track for that. And Mayor Protem, you had a question about stormwater on this?
Oh, yes, I did. You know, when we did the visionings or we went to the public, there was a lot of feedback about having a little playground there. You know, some of the veterans didn't want it, they wanted it to just be a place of reflection and quietness. And now with the stormwater, I was wondering if, in the area that we were looking at the playground, if we just did a retention pond there or some kind of, you know, reflecting pool or and if that would help out with the stormwater.
We looked at several options there, we looked at actual exfiltration, that maybe we could do a playground for the exfiltration system. We looked at redoing the storm, and this is all of the past months, so I know how it costs the project so far. We did, thought about having to tie into the existing stormwater system, Jeff came up with that idea. And in both of those cases, in speaking with the architect engineers, they just felt there wasn't enough. You couldn't encapsulate enough water there to make any kind of a difference. Did I say that about right, Jeff? But yeah, they looked at it, and Jeff even went and did soil samples to see exactly what the water table would be, to see how much water you could capture there, and it's just too small of a site to really make a difference in the big picture of what they looked at, so.
And that would be where the chessboard is?
I have a question about the park. I know, sitting through out there, when it was discussed and different designs, and there was some question about the playground and having children around, if we're making this for the veterans, would it make more sense to put a playground towards the civic hub? Rather than
Ground portion of the civic hub.
Rather than veterans' park?
I mean, the beauty of what's happening now is that it would just be a change order, obviously, to the existing contract and have that area somewhat redesigned. But, anything can happen.
Well, I would think that would make it a quieter space.
Yeah.
A more serene setting.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, there is no playground space planned for the Veterans Memorial Park?
Yes, absolutely.
The swings and all that?
It's not swings, I mean, no.
It's very passive.
Yeah, and again, when we were going through this process, the one thing that came out is that nationwide, just because it's called Veterans Memorial Park, doesn't mean that it's a place for veterans to sit there and reflect. Veterans Memorial Park just means a park dedicated to veterans, and, you know, and so in this design, as we seeked a ton of different input, playground and places for children were always part of it, and veterans have children, grandparents, veterans are grandparents, you know, so it was never
I understand that, and, you know, I understand the park concept, but I remember there was a lot of discussion about veterans wanting a quiet space.
Yeah, and their opinions were, you know, you have city park, you got the splash pad, you got the playground.
Right, but just right around the corner, we're gonna have a blank canvas, canvas here.
Yeah.
And it could be, and this is where you're going to have children.
Right.
So, to me, it makes more sense to have them over here.
I think that needs to be considered in the master planning process for the civic hub. One of my thoughts is that you are closer to A1A at that point, and it's not gonna be a fenced-in thing, per se, not necessarily.
What would be the cost that we designed now to change?
I mean, we have 100% design plan, so.
Okay, well, it's just an idea.
Yeah.
Well, I had brought it up mainly for the water retention idea, you know, I thought that
Yeah.
we could, if we could change it to a pond or some kind of thing that would help alleviate flooding and kind of do away with the playground, I understand the playground concept, and we did tone it down from swings and all that to more climbing, and hopefully around it, there will be educational things. You know, we talked about statues or plaques or this.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, like we say, people do bring their kids, you know, Gulf War veterans and other veterans have young kids, so they'll be there too. I just thought if it would help with the water problem.
Right, you know, we looked at it, we even, I mean, Jeff came up with it, what I thought was a great idea, of just tying into the existing stormwater system there, because there's some swells there, there's some dry retention right there that, you know, but the architect just said, well, he mainly said two things. He said by doing that, A, you are probably not gonna get the, what you think you want to get as far as water, being able to capture water. He also said the second thing is, you could be triggering a whole new permitting process with St. John's, which could delay your project indefinitely, the way St. John's responds, so, but so those were the two factors that came into that whole thing.
And phase one is scheduled for bidding in July?
Yeah.
So, when is phase one gonna be shovel-ready?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's shovel-ready, we just, you mean, when are you gonna start seeing construction?
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully August, because since it's two phases, if we start now, and then they finish half, and then it would look somewhat
Right, with the two fiscal years.
Finished, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The beauty of it, by the way, and as I envision this thing going out, for phase two, it'll be really nice to have, it seems like we're going for three different playgrounds, so it'll be really neat to have a very public bid process for all three playgrounds, so one company gets to put all three of them in, you know, and then it'll be public where, like before, like we did with with even Canaveral City Park, where I go to KP Elementary and see those 400 kids, and they vote on what design they want, you know? I mean, that can be a really neat thing for all three playgrounds if they're gonna happen next fiscal year, so. In my mind, that's how I'm ambitioning, at least the small portion of the playground, to happen in all the facilities.
And this is a, this is a review of an item that was approved at the previous retreat, so it doesn't need to be ranked and scored in this one, but it is, need to be brought up in terms of, it is part of the strategic plan that we're currently working. So, if there's nothing else, we can move forward, Mayor. All right, Daniel?
Having anything?
Okay, Daniel, next. Presidential Streets Master Plan, just an update, obviously, this is also on the currently approved list that we're working right now. We first, first workshop two months ago, and the second workshop, Dave, will be May 10th, and that's gonna be here in the council chambers. So, stay tuned, I think we're all really excited about that, this is the one project that got the most number of votes at the Strategic Planning Retreat last year. And you don't need to rank it and score it again this time, just again, bringing it forward for review. Mayor, wanna review it at all, we don't have to, in the interest of time, we could move forward.
No, I mean, just the next step is?
The next workshop, on May 10th.
Okay, and how many workshops are we doing? Two, so that'll be the final workshop?
Yeah, and this one will be, have a hybrid component as well.
And what's the work product after the two workshops, will we get some proposed plans? And start to kind of phase it in?
Yeah, essentially, what's going to happen, Mayor and Council, is that based on the input from the two workshops, as well as a, frankly, a very, I'm very excited about the participation we've had with the survey, we've had roughly 525 folks complete the survey associated with the master plan, it's very exciting. So, based on all that data gathering, there is going to be a, I'll call it a preliminary, some preliminary findings and and recommendations that the consultant will be providing to staff, and there'll be some back and forth there, so it's, the next step after the workshop is a kind of synthesizing through the information that's been gathered and coming up with some themes, some recommendations and things like that.
When do you expect we'll see a design proposal, I mean, actually, proposed design?
Oh, boy. Probably, wow, I don't wanna, I don't wanna I would anticipate we'd see something three months from now.
Yeah, so we're not ready to start budgeting dollars towards construction, because that design's gonna have to be approved as well, and council's gonna have a chance to weigh in on that, a public meeting, of course.
Right.
So, the following year, we're at the Strategic Planning Retreat, we are gonna plan on budgeting some dollars towards an improvement in that area in the Presidential Streets, because the design will be finished and wanna hit the ground running, I'd like to see us do a project every year to kick that off, and if it's a 20-year project, a 25-year project, that's fine. Having this, kicking it off right, getting the design right is crucial, because we're gonna follow that every year that we do this.
So, the cost of the plan is $180,000? And then we will, the design is included in that plan, and it'll be a master plan, it'll be all from Washington to Johnson?
It'll be, it'll be a typical plan
Yeah.
that you apply each year when you do one of these projects.
Yeah.
So, there'll be, it'll, it'll design the theming elements, it'll give examples of how this is supposed to look on a particular street or two, but not all, you know, 16 streets, it's just doing portions of it and say, now, copy and paste this throughout.
Yeah, in the, I'll call it, the down and dirty design and permitting will actually happen annually, as the city manager is talking about, street by street, so say if the decisions, we're gonna go with Polk Avenue first this year, we'll actually budget money to do the design and engineering for that specific street, and we'll get down and really get into the weeds and use that typical that Todd is talking about and apply it to that. But each one may be a little different based on the specific needs of that street.
Yeah, but you have these stampable elements that you put in each plan every year.
Yes.
Yeah, aesthetically, it'll, you know, cohesive, to look at one, to look at all, and, you know, Polk might look a little different.
Right.
Johnson might have a little bit more stormwater.
Yeah, or we might just decide we wanna do points at it first, you know, we, it's still, the theme has to stay the same.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
I just have one question, or maybe. Through the book that we have on the capital improvement plans, there's money in the budget for the coming year for paving, corners, beach ends, but we're not gonna do that, right, until we have a presidential master plan? So, where would that money be going?
That's a very good, that's a very good point, so if we, what we do have in the CRA is $80,000 a year now, going forward for the next five years for sidewalks and what have you, and then we do have these paving funds, one in the, one in stormwater, actually, for stormwater projects, and then $75,000, I believe, in IM, but that's a, that's a good question, because that was one thing I was thinking about. If the Presidential Streets, after this next year's budget, did not, was not taking place like we thought it would, then those pockets of money, we will have to decide whether or not we keep a CIP for paving, or or, we're not gonna remove the sidewalk thing in the CRA, council wants that, I know. But, but those buckets, among you're talking about with the paving and the mobility funds or whatever, it all goes into a sidewalk or or a bike trail or whatever, yes, that would have to be moved someplace else, that would be available in the budget, because we not, wouldn't be using it, if a Presidential Streets being constructed, then there's no sense in putting
Exactly.
$75,000 aside for a paving or sidewalk, exactly, they'd be removed, and it'd be consumed by the Presidential Street project.
My question is, in last year's budget, it was all in there, and we haven't done anything. So, shouldn't, shouldn't, and this is, shouldn't we have a Presidential Street Master Plan line item or whatever, and that money, if we don't use it, goes there?
Yeah, that hasn't been established.
You know what I'm saying?
In other words
The first project here will have that.
Yeah.
Well, I think we could start it now, though, with the cost of the plan.
Right.
The cost of, now, the $180,000, it's the cost of this anticipated cost, whatever, that's sitting in Mr. Dickey's community development budget as part of his operational expenditures for professional services.
Which we've been drawing down on.
Right.
But could, could we, I mean, it's not in the capital improvement plan?
No, that, because that's considered like a
Professional services, it's in our professional services line item.
That'll be in the budget, sir, when you see that one July in his, in his, his actual budget.
So, the capital improvement plan will take it on after the professional services are done. Then it goes into the CIP.
Got it, but it wouldn't be crazy to, I mean, all of the, when we said Cape Center, for example, we said Cape Center, we created a CIP line item, and professional services was a part of that line item. So, it's just that, right, I mean, and so I think what Mayor Protem Kellam is saying is, could this year, I think we've already spent the money, but anyways, could we put it as a CIP?
It's, yeah, it's, it seems like it's ripe for transition.
And put a one, put the 180 there, whatnot, and, because then we'll be able to see the years moving forward, the money going to it, and maybe that's where the sidewalk absorbs in, I mean, it's, it's fine the way I think you're going about it, it is fine, but it just, it shows we're being intentional, and we can see it, opposed to embedded into the professional services.
And also that, you know, residents say to me, well, you have this corner improvements in your budget for the last five years, what corners have you improved? So, you know, if we had it, if it was
Some of those dollars, in answer to your question, are being consumed by our capital projects like the MGF. Okay, so, those, that part of that, maybe that sidewalk or that corner thing is being consumed within that project because of the cost. It's the choice of, you know, obviously, the need of the city for staff to determine, like, like you said, if there's a corner improvement, where is it, and how do they identify corner improvements?
Well, I'm just saying what I hear, and I think for people to understand the budget and transparency, when the money that went for a corner went somewhere else, where does that show?
Well, and as far as the CRA goes, the money, that money is being consumed in the overall capital projects within CRA. And of course, there are sidewalks and corners near these buildings or whatever, if that's how you would wanna look at it, but as far as a separate project for what you're saying, a corner thing, you're absolutely correct, there has not been one done this year, not to my knowledge.
So, where, where is that money?
The money is in the CRA, and it's being used as part of, like, the MGF and what have you.
The regeneration facility was more expensive than it does.
Exactly.
Took away from other critical and destructive.
Well, I mean, moving forward, the Presidential Street Master Plan is very important to the people, and you know, if we had an item and they saw $35,000, it's gonna go, and we're not gonna use it, maybe not this year, not next year, but there'll be, it'll be there when we get there.
Yeah, well, the, the, the planning, the preparation of the master plan should be done this fiscal year. So, starting in '22, '23, I mean, at any point, we can pull the trigger to start actually implementing the plan and constructing these improvements, whether it's street by street or however, however that's decided, but yeah, I mean, the next logical step is to start funding the implementation of the, of the master plan, and it's not gonna be $30,000 either.
But funding those, when those anticipated costs.
It's gonna be millions.
Just use $100,000, just say it, but in the last, in the previous three years, we put so much money towards that, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand.
When the push comes to shove and the bill comes, we have some money put away, you know what I'm saying? In a fund that doesn't get absorbed by something else, if that's possible.
Yeah, I, I, I understand what the Mayor Protem's saying, but I think what you need to look at is that when you have a budget and money is put in the budget for something, and it's not spent, if your, if your revenues exceed your expenses, what's ever left is, well, it's in the bank, it's going to the bank, we haven't spent the money. But if those expenses, if the revenues don't exceed the expenses, then, and, and things kind of balance themselves out, it's not like there's any kitty that's sitting there, that's sitting, you know, if I put $100,000 in the budget here for this line item, and we don't spend it, it's gonna fall into fund balance and move into the bank account, so it won't be identifiable as, oh, hey, there's that money for that sidewalk, you know what I'm saying, it's not gonna be like that. But, you know, you would have, you would not have spent that money, it's, it's, it's a little bit difficult of a concept, but in essence, if we put it in there, we didn't spend it, yes, the money would be in the bank, and
We didn't lose it.
What's that?
We didn't lose it.
And you didn't, so you didn't, yeah, and you didn't use it, but I think in the grander sense, and Dave helped me out here, but if you're gonna do a Presidential Street, it is a massive project, and there's so many things to it. So, when the first one's scheduled, and you talk about what the anticipated costs are, and this is gonna start, then guess what? When it's put in that budget, that budget year, it's gonna begin to be used. So, it's not like you're gonna be, you know, it's So it's not like you're gonna be, you know, it's not like our renewal and replacement thing where we put money in. Because then, you know, uh. We need a new new vehicles for the city or air conditionings or whatever, but.
Yeah, I mean, and un- until we get these typical. Designs from Kim Lee Horn. We really don't know what we're talking about. I mean, we've got a good, and and it's gonna, as I said earlier, it's gonna vary street by street. Polk may require some upgrading of some storm sewer. Or a new water line, or excuse me, new sewer line, or we're gonna put in some reuse lines. So it's it's gonna vary street by street and year by year on how much we spend or potentially spend. Um, but um. Yeah, it's 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 and it's gonna be a commitment. There's there's the the council can spend a lot of money. In the presidential streets as as we go through this.
That is a major effort. I mean, that is almost, when you think about it, it's a complexity and it's.
It evolved. It started, I think. There were two ideas and and they kind of got merged. One of them was the just improving the beach crossovers, which is primarily the. Presidential Streets Master Plan, that was something. That I think council we were talking about. And I think the way it went was it was like, well, we're gonna do this, let's just merge it all together. And it's, I mean, it's like saying, we're gonna develop twenty percent of the city, you know, just and and so. I. When we get this map, when we kind of see the big picture. I think we'll have to. Take our best shot at what the total cost is gonna be for a street.
We'll know after the first project. We'll know after the first project. The first project's gonna be a big learning curve for us.
Yeah.
We're gonna scope it, we're gonna have an idea what it's gonna be, we're gonna implement it. And we're gonna learn a lot of lessons. And use those forward in the next few years as we build this out. Yeah, they you're right, they it did, it did mission creep into the uh the crossovers.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, the highest. The cross, there's gonna be higher impact areas, you know, so. It's it's a big one for sure. I think what what Mayor Jim Kellum is talking about. It it about when we approve like a a a budget item. We are saying yes to funds. For that project to be complete, and if it's something as visi- visible as. The Cape Community Center. There's no doubt that's getting done. I mean, it's finite, you know, it's visible, it's verifiable, it's getting done. But when it's these line items that are smaller things like curb appeal. You know. We wanna know, or I do at least, what items didn't get done. Because we, the will of the council was to do that. I mean, that was approved, and I and I'm not saying. You know, within a professional services house, we're not getting to that line item, but. When it has its own line and it has a name and a title. There's no internal control or mechanism to know, you know, what might be getting. Deprived or not be getting done, right? I mean, that's your point.
Where that money.
We don't like this, well, like like a corner improvement line item. That. May have been spent on one or two corners throughout this year to do improvements out there. I don't know off the top of my head. If it was, where that what where that happened. But it could also be that. You know, we didn't do that this year, for whatever reason, we didn't do that. Well, that money. Just gets put forwarded in into the fund balance for the following year. And it's available to be reallocated that next year again for corner improvements or the presidential streets or whatever we say it needs to go into. If that makes sense.
But but that's not how it happens every time. You're saying. If that scenario happens, then there's what you're saying, corner improvement, say it's twenty-five thousand dollars. Someone made a decision. I don't think it was council, it'd be you, administration, says, we're not gonna do that this year, based on your recommendation. We didn't say that. We we said, no, let's do it. And so there's discretion and authority for you to go, I'm not gonna do it, and the will of the council is no, do it. Now, I'm not saying we wouldn't disagree with you, and we're not saying that that. But there's no point to where we're notified to say, hey, I'm not gonna move forward with this. So at the end of the year, that's true enough to go, here's the thirty things that I, as your city manager. Made a decision I didn't want to do for these reasons. But it doesn't always happen like that. It happens from how our finance director was saying, is that the twenty-five thousand didn't roll over into another fund. The twenty-five thousand, another. Unilateral decision that you have the ability to take. Was needed to to bake up for the cost of the overruns on a on a on a. On a um Cape. On the Cape Center.
Existing project.
And we're not notified about that either. And so then, those are two very different stories. I'm. I'm not saying we need to approve either one of those decisions, keep making those decisions, just. If there is a mechanism to let us know, hey, here the council, here was the budget you approved. These highlighted ones didn't get done and. Fifty percent of it's rolled over to be used for next year, and here's fifty percent were actually absorbed by these projects.
And I think I know where I could help here to to give a little bit of clarity to this. Is that many of the things we talked about, like paving and 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 different things like that, uh uh crossovers or whatever. And. We could show council. I mean, we have a spreadsheet that shows what is slated to be done. Now, corner improvements are a. We don't know, we don't know when we're gonna do a corner improvement. Is that true, Public Works? We don't know when we're gonna do. No, right? It's kind of, but as far as the paving goes and this mobility fund or whatever. Remember, a lot of these items go into renewal and replace. We keep building up that thing because, for instance. The renewable place keeps going, uh the fire department, the chief sergeant down there, he's got renewal placement items. Well, this year uh coming up, the chief's gonna say, okay, John, try it's time to give me my six hundred thousand, and I hope the price hasn't went up. For the renewal or place of his. Uh ladder truck, okay? And the things that the the mayor's talking about, there's there's those things every month. I put have to put in, and you there's an expense line in the budget, in in the um. General Fund and Waste Water Fund. And I, every month, I put twenty thousand dollars into our investment account. Okay? And that takes place for twelve months, two hundred and forty thousand dollars this year. And I do the same thing for waste water and storm water when a budgets could allow it. So. Not everything that's not spent on something like, say, paving, if we didn't. There's money that's being replenished and that's being put over here into the SPIA renewal and replacement account. So when it's time to pave. Something, right? I will do a liquidation out of that investment account, because that's where we put the money. We're we're putting the money and then we're taking it out. Yeah.
What I'm saying is, we're, we don't see that.
Right.
Right.
Wouldn't the mayor, and these are great questions.
Yeah.
We're we're getting far off of the topic, which is supposed to be preparing us for the rankings of capital projects.
Because you wanna build a budget.
Yes.
And what we're telling you, what I'm telling you, I'll speak for myself, is. This budget this year. We wanna make sure if there were, here's an easy fix. If there were any pro- projects that were not done last year. If you can let us know of those projects, that fixes my concern.
Isn't? Isn't that handled at at the end of the year, when you, when the council's asked to handle all the budget amendments? Don't don't you itemize, aren't those?
Well, what it.
Projects that weren't done, itemized, budget amendments?
No, it 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 shows what was.
That's kind of what.
It was shows what what's been un- unspent when we do the the budget uh amendments. But in a greater sense, where it gets a little difficult is, and and I see where you're going with this, Mayor, is like. Um, if, let's say, we had money, fifty-three thousand dollars in the budget to do uh corner improvements. And we don't do any corner improvements, okay? But see, if you were to ask Public Works, they want money in there for corner improvements. But it's not like it's a specific corner improvement that they're identifying. Uh, they they're putting it in there in case they have to do a corner improvement. Okay, so those are the type of things that cannot be, you know, explained.
That's a great thing to go. We thought we wanted to be prepared for a current improvement. We didn't spend this money for our corner.
Right.
And so before the budget, and I know what you're talking about the end of the year, about the changes in the dollars, that would be a great time, but the problem with. The end of the fiscal year, you're saying.
Right.
Is if we can know what they are. And I know it's difficult, like year to date before, like. In the next few weeks, like what projects, best guess, what aren't done or that we don't think are gonna get done? Because. Those are going to be. Helpful for setting the next budget, and so that that was it to know.
And that might be difficult because of just the things that happen, like, for instance, when Jeff said, we didn't have, we can't get this, whatever. Materials or whatever, and it's gonna be pushed into the next year, or things of that nature. It's it's very hard to say in April, will we think. They're gonna be done, which we got a pretty good idea, but we have no idea what's gonna circumvent that. Project.
I understand. Maybe we'll get a little closer to it, but thank you, Todd.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Daniel, I think we're ready to move on from presidential streets to the next one. There are several slides for this one.
Yeah.
All right, into sustainability resilience. Environmental Innovation Corner Project. Uh, this one is, of course, the uh the two pieces of land. They're both currently owned, privately owned. The the idea is to preserve some of the native forest of the city of Cape Canaveral. Uh, before it gets bought up. So the the big thing here is, we're really looking hard for grant monies to purchase, to acquire these properties. Um, we we may succeed, we may fail. Or over the course of time that it takes to get them, somebody might else, somebody else might buy that piece of property. So. This is something that's it's very hopeful. The only way we could really absolutely do it right now is just say, we're willing to fund a hundred percent of that. Well, I don't think we're willing to do that. At this point, you know, you've got some ten million dollars worth of property here. If we could wave a magic wand, I would love to see a hundred percent of that funded through grant funds. I think it's a worthwhile project, right? I think we all understand the merits of the project. But the reality of it is, we won't be a hundred percent successful with this. But we do want to put it on the plan because we we are asking. Council to, if if we wanna get serious about this work, asking council to approve it so that. Staff can continue to apply resources towards acquiring these properties. If we say we don't want this, you know, let us know that too, and we won't. But at some point, we all have to recognize that we are not gonna be a hundred percent successful with grant funding. And whatever that shortfall is, we're gonna have to find a way to make that up. We don't know until we march down that road a ways. So this is a very hopeful project. And it's not a guaranteed thing.
And this is. Something we need to write.
Yes. This will be, this is a new project this year. Zach, um, you wanna cover anything else on that one?
Is there a picture of the site or?
Is there a picture in there with this one? Daniel, is there a picture after this?
Yeah, there should be at the end.
Keep going, Daniel.
John Picard did some.
There we go, that's one.
That's the uh eight acre site on West Central Boulevard. And then there's um. A, um, I don't remember the acreage of the other one. Uh, with the addition.
Four or five?
Yeah, that's about five, um, but there's actually two parcels. The one's on the other side, the 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 Canaveral Ditch. Um, which is that little skinny river uh running through it. Um, so we we just put in a a grant today, actually, with uh NIFWIF, which is the National Fish and Wildlife. Organization uh to do, get some possible grant funding for some um site assessments and surveys. Because we really don't know much about them from a biological and environmental perspective. It could be endangered species there that we don't know about, which would be very helpful to know, because that would go a long ways to. Getting organizations to want to probably commit to conserving this. Um. And to just do some general site assessments to see what the quality of the soil is, what type of species are in there in terms of vegetation. Um, to see what the extent of wetlands are that that we believe are certainly in at least one of them. Um. And uh just to kind of figure out, you know, what what would. In a sense, make these, you know, look not developable, because these are some of the last parcels of, you know, native vegetation that we have. Old coastal hammock. Um, so. In a sense, to show, you know, a lot of money, we've got to go into one of these to get properly developed. Which is probably why they haven't been for so long, because the sites are really uh primitive.
Pretty wet.
Very wet, especially in the summer. So. That grant was, uh, I think for about fifty thousand dollars, so we'll see if we get that. But uh that's pretty much where we're at. We're talking through with organizations like the Nature Conservancy, which, you know, their thing is to buy land. Um, usually not in this small amount. Usually they go for like hundreds of thousands of acres at a time. We're only dealing with um about a dozen, but um. We're hopeful that we can get something at least through these organizations. Uh, cuz they're 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 hopeful too, but I know hope is not a strategy.
Right.
So.
So we need a few scrub drays, a couple of gopher tortoises, and we're uh we're suddenly in the.
We could be.
I see that look.
The North Atlantic. Right, we gotta protect the North Atlantic.
Other than parcel.
And the 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 two combined are actually eight point one, Zach.
Oh, eight point one.
Eight point one, right.
Daniel, do you move your mouse? Do you know where they're talking about the southern portion, if you can?
Daniel, advance one more slide. Okay, so you see the the highlighted yellow there on therm? So it's that forested section that's not highlighted directly southeast of it, that triang- triangular plot.
That's, is that landmark? No, there's a.
It has access to the to the lagoon as well, yeah.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, that's a weird.
He considers that one cell.
But that canal is running right through it.
It does.
Dividing those two, and is it one?
No, there are actually three parcels.
He he owns the uh.
The the sliver in between is the canal, and it's a separate parcel, privately owned.
So uh this project is. I mean, it it's a lot of money, and I and I see the grant, but. Both of them. I are are. If there's a way that we can. You know. We even talked about. Acquiring the property with city money to then maybe recoup it by. You know, I don't know if you can get grants after that and recoup your dollars or whatever, but there's um. The the downtown that, going back to the the early visionings, go to the other property on Central. Um, please, Daniel, it's the uh. Yes, this one, so. And zoom, yeah, just, there you go, perfect, thank you. Um, so North Atlantic to the right there. That's obviously, and then Central, you kind of get oriented where you are. The the. This property being natural. Diverse. Um. Wildlife species, biodiversity, it's all there. You would want to try to preserve as much as possible, but. Zone commercial, right?
It is.
And something that that, you know, if a developer bought it tomorrow, we'd snap our fingers and go dang, you know, and they do multi-family or. Commercial, who knows? But this is um. The valley, the most, thi- this property going up and down, so north and and this is oriented.
North is at the top.
This is, this is, yep, correct, so the compass, burrows, yeah, north would is going up. I believe it's three hundred foot north and south, and then, uh, I don't know. Maybe a few thousand feet wide, but the point, the reason I say three hundred feet is because if you took. One-third of the West Central Abutting Street frontage property there. That from a commercial property owner's perspective, which this is on his commercial. that from a commercial property owner's perspective, which this is on his commercial, that's the most valuable part of this property. The frontage, right. So if you're gonna have a retail storefront, you're gonna have little shops, boutiques, walkable, bikeable wine shops, gift, little bistro's, maybe you do mixed use, you've got residential on the top, it's quiet, low-key, dim lights, big wide sidewalks, you walk up and down. You've got a walkable path up and down the old Canaveral, which is the historical landmark, we should make it as sort of, um, and of where that was the edge of Cape Canaveral, right? And so a little walkable wooden bridge over West Central high enough for the fire trucks to get on over and stuff. But it's this little stroll, and so you lose a hundred foot, which is one-third of this property. So the letter H up there, up on the top left, is about a hundred feet. So subdivide that, and then that property there is the most valuable, makes up a larger percent, i- in my opinion. However, you go, what, you know, you, that's not big enough for anyone to do anything. Where are you getting, by this time you do parking, stormwater and all that. Well, if we handle the stormwater back here like Zach is trying to work and we and we we eradicate the the Brazilian peppers, and we keep those beautiful palms and oaks and natural, and we can route that stormwater and make this this quiet, bikeable, walkable, little stroll, birds chirping, beautiful sanctuary. And then up here, you've got this low intensity or medium intensity commercial development downtown. You know, think quiet, nothing intense use, again, little restaurants with big sidewalks. The this is a, an uh, the opportunity to where it's, it might make best in it. Try to get the grant funds, because with the CRA, we could flip it back on to a private developer. And so we basically subdivide this, say the city's gonna try to get grants or whatnot to retain at least two-thirds of it. But this one-third, we put out a bid for a developer to come in and to design the downtown, so the city owns it. But they they come in and they have to design the downtown that the residents, this community has wanted for so many years. Zach and I chatted about it, I talked with our city manager. This was an opportunity. And I don't want this project to sit, when we see six million bucks, to run, because we might be able to make the economics work. To say, well, if we did acquire it, what's the right price, all that, and then we could recoup money by bringing it back. So we hand, they don't need stormwater. Parking can be centralized, you know, take the lumberyard or something, maybe there's a centralized three-story, small, low-key parking garage. So they really just can use the whole space. I'm done. That's something that I haven't got a chance to to talk with council about, but.
So.
I am very motivated by this project, and I know the community in trying to keep it as natural as possible, but if you have to compromise, I think that's the way to do it.
The idea is to try to make something of a return on the investment.
Yes.
You're gonna have mixed use places there too, whatever.
You're you're not, your idea's not far off. Um, some of you may be familiar with Dr. Dwayne DeFreeze, head of the National Estuary Program for the Indian River Lagoon. Big name in the science community. He's seen these properties uh, onsite. He walked them with us. And he had a similar idea, actually, where he took about maybe two acres of this, eight, and you devoted it to that. Some type of agreement where, you know, mutually help each other. Uh, for this one specifically. This one is more probably valuable in terms of its environmental conservation. Since the other one technically never existed several decades ago, it's film material. This one always did exist. Um, like, like the mayor said, the the river there, the little ditch, that used to be the old shoreline of the island, which is pretty cool. That's why that end is very wet, and the other end, the eastern end is not wet. Um, and then also something to to talk about with, we actually would have a little bit more space to worry, to uh, to work with, because, and Todd could fill you in on this, those three linear uh, parcels, uh, those could be involved as well.
To the south.
To the south.
Yeah, I've spoken to the owner there, and and he said that he would entertain an a- an offer at a same square foot price that the other parcel would sell for.
So he'd actually have a little bit more than eight acres.
Okay.
And that's native habitat as well.
It is.
And if you've got a big, beautiful oak in that top third, like Dr. DeFreeze, I mean, we were talking, you work around, I mean, the the designers and the planners can can work around, cuz there are a lot of oaks going down there, but yeah, and I mean, that's it. I so, I think you.
I got a question. I'm sorry.
That that property is six million.
Yes.
And that includes the two narrow.
No, no.
We we don't know.
They would be available potentially at the same square foot price.
How many acres?
I'm not sure with the additional three.
Probably seven point five million.
Yeah.
I have a question, Zach.
Yes.
We uh, first talked about this when we had the presentation. They talked about a letter, sending a letter to SpaceX?
We did. We did. We sent it um, indirectly in a sense to Congressman.
Hosea Walz.
Yeah. And uh, we know they saw it, um, but we never got a response. So.
What was that letter?
It was, SpaceX had recently put some money into Brownsville, Texas for infrastructure improvements uh, for that city because they had a presence there. And we thought, and I think this is a great idea.
Yeah.
If they're willing to do that where they're, where they live, well, they live here too.
Their fa- their facility is literally next door.
Oh, yeah.
It's an important facility. Elon Musk actually name dropped it in the presentation recently. Um, so the idea was, you know, maybe they could help us out.
Yeah, still waiting to hear.
Still waiting to hear. To Mr. Musk.
One question. Do you know what the price of the property across the street?
Betty Gould's property? Dave, do you have a number on that? She's got ten acres.
There is a sign up.
It's a lot.
There is a sign up. I thought, there was actually a sign up there. I I think, I think it said six million. I'm not sure though. Did it say six million? There is a sign up there.
Yeah.
Because if if we were to, if we were to proceed with something like this, it's going to initiate interest in purchasing the other, because we're creating, like Mayor said, we're creating a downtown that's gonna make one, that property across the street, more valuable. But it would probably generate interest in developing that property, a little more so than what it would be right now. Um, so we're achieving multiple things here. If we were to purchase it and develop it or have it developed as a city center type idea, because it would draw interest to the other.
For activity.
Yeah, it would become a um, green ecotourist hub, in a sense, that could spin off a lot of nice amenities and interest in the community.
Economic catalyst.
If you could have, in a perfect world, you're exactly right. You acquire both properties, and then this, you'd subdivide the valuable frontage off. You could sell the backside of that other property, Betty Gould's on the other side, back. And but you're talking about protecting that street frontage, or you know, maybe you do a part, whatever. But the point is, you extract as much value out, right? And then the city holds this natural area. And then the the subdivided frontage, commercial property, maybe that goes back on to the market and the sales of those proceeds from all that frontage, and city even, they bought it low, and you're right, it's gonna increase. You very well might make a large portion of the money back just from redeveloping it, subdividing it. And think about if the city handles stormwater and all those costs that developers have to do and makes it essentially shovel-ready, very similar to David Dickey's presentation, the Lot Aggregation Program, and that, right? This is exactly what we were talking about.
Yeah, you you create value, and then you're paying off, you're helping pay your investment off through that. So there there's a a little bit of management that has to happen there to put a property under contract that you might further subdivide and also still want grant funding for. We have to be careful about how we approach that.
The 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 last thing I'll say is, we do have the ability to um, you have to put risk capital out, but an option agreement.
Yep.
So we would pay a certain amount, you get a five-year option agreement, option to purchase, you agree, come to the price, pick whatever it is. And then we would pay an amount of money every year. It's gone. It's risk money. But you get the development rights, and at any point you exercise the option, you buy it for that predetermined price. And or you walk away with a little bit of loss, but at least you get some breathing room to go out and do an economic analysis and market, see if it's even worth it to commercial developers, and do all the studies, and do it without the pressure of the market, and that, we come in and pick that for sale sign down together, you know, it's like, but an option agreement allows you to do that, and buys maybe thirty-six months or five years. And you might have to pay, I'm not saying the number, but thousand dollars a year to hold it.
But it is a prospective uh, project for us. We, and I thank you, Mayor, for your interest in this. You've been with me all along on this. I think it's a great idea. And uh, let's uh, rank this one for sure, and we'll we'll see what we can do with it after the scores come out.
And just to end, uh, say one last thing, this would ultimately, um, Daniel, if you wanna proceed, two more slides. This would link up to uh, one more slide, please. The aquarium.
Yeah.
Via the kayak trail.
Beautiful.
So, and they're aware of it too.
Yeah, they they support this.
They do.
Okay, anything else on this one? We're we're gonna be running out of time here. We're at, what, nine, nine twenty? We need to keep moving. Um, Mayor, if we can proceed?
Go for it.
Okay, Daniel, let's proceed. Keep going. All right, Culture Community Affairs. The Cape Center, this is forty-five percent complete, obviously. It's right across the street. We see it all the time. Uh, supply chain disruptions caused by the pandemic, and we're still going through that now, and there's very slow progress right now. This is not a rankable project. This is just a status update item. Mayor, all right, moving on. Let's keep going, Daniel. Capital Project Central Ditch Improvements, fiscal year um, twenty through twenty-five, anticipated cost four hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Uh, Tetra Tech did the hydraulic analysis. Uh, we had March twenty-two, Jeff, or Tim, update me on that one. Yep, who's, is this yours, Jeff? Tim, you wanna update us on this one? Anything we need to know? Waiting on the what? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay.
But this is a flooding project. I mean, we talk about flooding in the city, this is gonna help with flooding. Is that right? That's great.
Okay. Any questions on this one? Um, this is, this is not a rankable project. This was presented before.
No, I'm good.
Okay, let's move forward. Daniel, deep injection well, yay, let's cross that one off. Let's continue, Daniel. Therm Boulevard Improvements, um, Therm Boulevard would be completing the horseshoe that we started on West Central. Um, the total price on this, I don't see it on this slide. Jeff, is it on the next slide? No, where is that?
It's in the CIP, it's five hundred and one thousand dollars.
Right.
In twenty-three, twenty-four, SW ten, in the new CIPs.
It's gonna be uh, thematically the same as the West Central Boulevard Improvement. Uh, this is the first year this has improved, I've been put, been put on this, right? We didn't have this last year, Jeff.
So construction is anticipated this fall?
Where?
On the slide there.
Yeah, cuz I'm like, I I hear nothing.
That's what I thought, too.
Okay, so this is a, this is a type. Right.
Right. That's the stormwater part. That's the stormwater part, the five hundred thousand.
Yeah, I thought we we put it off.
Councilmember Willis's road anyways, you know.
No, it's not.
No, you're you're central. You're a little further. That's not the most.
He's taken care of.
No, it does make sense. It would continue it, so.
But this isn't something we need to rank. This is.
This is put off another year, Jeff? Right, okay, all right. We won't be ranking this one. Let's move on. West Central Boulevard Wet Pond. Jeff, you wanna talk about that one? Not a specific location. It's money designated for an opportunity, should it come up. Kind of like the corner improvements money.
Well, we take.
Where where at on West Central would be thinking about this?
Trailer parks on West Central?
Uh, no, the the property across from on the backside of the uh,
And this is also opportunity driven. This, and there's currently not an opportunity for this one.
And it's not on this year. It's nothing we have to rank.
Right.
I had a map. Okay. Oh.
It's it's.
So west is west of North Atlantic, I'm I'm.
Yeah.
Right where we were just talking, okay.
You couldn't put a wet pond in the six million dollar property? Take that two point two. And go buy the six million dollar property. The two point, wait a minute, two million, two, six, two, one, five hundred. But what is the actual cost? Cuz we've got too many numbers and not enough commas.
Oh, that isn't, that's the number of the day right there.
There's an extra two in there, right, Jeff?
Actually, that's running in SW seven in twenty-five, twenty-six at a hundred and twenty-one K, and then in twenty-six, twenty-seven, the balance at two point five million.
I don't think you see is what we see.
Thank you for catching that. There's a typo over there on that slide.
It's, yeah, it's it's out there. It's out there, but.
No, nothing we need to rank. It's a part of this effort, so we can continue. But this is something out in the future, we're gonna keep our eye open for.
But but for that amount of money, how big of a wet pond are we talking about?
And just how wet is this pond?
I mean, no, no, but seriously, could could that be developed on a different piece of property?
Well, based on these discussions, West Central Boulevard is just one big stormwater pond after this is all we've been talking about for the last forty-five minutes, but I mean, right, you you look at all the storm, that's where the availability is there. But uh,
Exactly. That's, that's, that's.
But the point is, if we got six million to divide this property, and you already got two million over here. I mean, you've already been thinking about the Gould property for this, and the, yeah, and so merging the the two.
Okay, we'll just keep that on our radar. Um, Mayor, if we can move on?
Yes, sir.
All right, Daniel. Sidewalks, non-presidential streets, uh, this is um, Councilmember Willis's item. Um, this is in the in the budget, um, over.
In the CR, yes, it's in the CRA, eighty thousand dollars a year.
So we've, we're we're considering this already a budgeted project, because especially if we're doing it over two years, cuz we've had mobility and sidewalk money in there for years that can that can handle this. So I I think this is a no-brainer to move forward with this.
Is this rankable?
It is, but um, I almost hate to see a way to waste or rank on it, because it's such a slam dunk no-brainer. I mean, if council wants, we can pull it off and just say, it's already funded, let's not waste votes on it. I would be okay with that.
Yeah, because what, when we did that last year, we wasted some votes on things that already have that.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot, I would agree.
If there's council consensus on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I I'm speaking for me.
Kim, that's, so we'll record consensus to remove this from consideration as a rankable project, because it it's budgeted. And we'll just put the money towards this. It was really. It was really brilliant packaging is what it is. All right, so let's move on then.
We each get one of those, just absorb like that? Councilmember Davis, you're next, all right, you get to.
Let's continue. Public Works. Uh collection system upgrade, sixty five thousand dollars, um June, you wanna talk about this one, June there? Okay. Uh this is the G I S mapping of the of the city sewer system, so this is uh the next phase uh D E P requirement, it's a requirement, right, Jeff? I mean, we have to do this. Yes.
This is rankable or no?
Well, you know, when it comes to one of those projects that we have to do, we're under mandate to do, I don't expect you to rank those. It, we we, yes, um Doug's still listening, Mia, make sure we designate those things on the scoring sheets that are mandates that we don't need to put a vote on. Let's move on.
Just to be clear, phase one discovered, so it was successful in the G I S discovering problems that like the liners I was reading, and said these sixty five will go in and and fix them, and then D E P eventually will give you're good to go compliant. Okay.
Same with this one, sanitary sewer G S mapping phase two. Uh Senate Bill seven twelve, same, explains the same thing, we have to do this uh and put it on G I S. So we'll earmark this one also as non rankable because it's a mandate. Jeff, anything you wanna add to that? Yeah, so yeah, while it is part of our strategic plan, um I I don't see us wasting votes on these things that we have to do. All right, continuing. Leisure Services. This is um councilmember or mayor Pro Tem's um item, uh she brought it to our attention that we needed a concession stand and I I agree one hundred percent, I mean, I I think about the 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 Little League of my youth and concession stand was a big part of it and we just don't have that right now. So where we are on this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Pro Tem, is to replace the current wooden press box building at that location um with a a facility, we're looking at anticipated costs two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, Gustavo, what does that get us?
A ten by ten box. That's what we heard last time, I think.
What was that?
A ten by ten, oh, a ten by fifteen, hundred fifty, he said, what is the two hundred and thirty thousand?
Yeah, well, uh so obviously we would have to design it, but we would push the area, the two hundred and thirty gets you the building plus the site developed with, you know, um what we would try obviously to do as much um pervy as as possible, there's pavers uh around the actual press box itself, some side amenities, benches and with some umbrellas that, you know, Little League can put out there. Um the the concession area itself, you know, you would just would have shelving, obviously, as as part of it, we let Little League decide on that, but the two thirty gets you a nice two story concession with uh attached storage for the tractor to take care of the Little League field and all that.
And then storage upstairs.
Storage upstairs is part of the press box, of course. A- as we walked the site, we we felt that you could expand it. Um it kind of faces, it's it's angular, so I would say uh uh what is, what direction is that, north? Northwest, yeah, so a little bit northwest and a little bit southeast and develop the whole area.
This is a rankable project. It it would be very cool, it'd be a nice amenity there, obviously, we'd lose a really nice mural that was just put on there, but we could put another one up.
That's right, more.
And I think it's real important to the to the community, it would be a gathering place, um you know, if you go watch the kids play and get a hot dog and drive your golf cart down there.
And. And Gustavo had foresight to bring the uh sanitary sewer line north and serve this, so that's gonna reduce the construction costs right there.
Yes, and I I think it's real important and and like I said before, when I present presented this, is the Space Coast Little League is building, you know, they started out with, I think Joe said, thirty kids, they're up to a hundred and fifty now. Hopefully it will continue and then with what you're doing to the field, I was talking to Joe today and he said they'll be able to play softball on that field as well.
Yeah.
So they're trying to start a softball league for the girls there as well.
Nice, that's perfect. Yeah, and and then, yeah.
And you've got a great view of the Little League from the window and the multi generational facility, that's just like the cat birds, yeah, beautiful. Council box seat, uh if there's nothing else on this, mayor, we can move on. All right, Daniel, this is rankable, yep. Uh lot aggregation program, Dave, I'll let you talk about this, but basically what this is, is if council does want to do this, um putting the plan together doesn't cost money, but that's what we're asking council to do is how, direct us to put the plan together. The plan would be um supporting an element of our CRA which says that you can, a a CRA can aggregate parcels, that's taking a piece of property and another piece of property that's next to it and putting them together. And why would you do that? You would do that because so many of the properties, especially in the blighted areas of the city, are in very small parcels. And that's part of the reason why they're not getting redeveloped, because if you tore them down, you couldn't build something else on it, it's too small. You couldn't park it, you couldn't put stormwater on it. But if you had an agency like a CRA come in like a big time developer and buy up these parcels, put them together, knock those buildings down, make that now a developable site, sell it, recoup that investment or recoup that expenditure, now you've combated blight directly. The 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 plan is a very nuanced plan because you have to work through third parties, because once the city says, I want those two parcels, those owners say cha-ching, cha-ching, I'm gonna really, so you have to work with a third party to do this. So I'm not gonna say it's out of the sunshine, it is not out of the sunshine, I'm not saying that at all, but there has to be some strategic moves made with a third party to make this happen. So if you want a plan put together, we would flesh that plan out and present it to the CRA board to approve that plan and then city staff would work on behalf of the CRA to work with those third parties to possibly put some deals together. So again, well, all we're asking for here is do we wanna put a plan together?
And this is rankable?
This is rankable, yep.
What, when it says figure two there, property acquisition, fourth bullet down, is that a link to, I mean, do, I I'm just trying to are are there a lot of opportunities in the city? I'm having a hard time, I mean, if an existing structures there. Is it okay to 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 share one example of where?
If I, if we were in another city, I'd be glad to, but I wouldn't wanna tip our hat here.
I understand.
But.
So we would not be able to know the parcels that you were pursuing for.
You you would, we 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 just would not present it until we had a presentable deal. In other words, we'd have to have some properties under contract.
Right.
And say, here's what we're bringing up to you in the sunshine as a as a deal, but to get them under contract, we've gotta work with a third party.
Yeah. For confidentiality?
Yes, and and to make sure we're getting our value.
And the, who does the third party represent?
The city.
And does the third party tell the property owner that they represent the city?
They don't have to.
No, not not until the contract's signed.
Okay.
And and however, the council will be, or the CRA board, depending on how we fashion it, will be involved on the front end because this board will be identifying, let's let's just look at some of our problems in the city, parking.
Mm hmm.
Are there certain areas in the city where we're having a a distinct parking problem? If there is, are there opportunities for this program to come in and acquire a parcel or two to combine them for a public parking facility? So we could, we could anticipate that parking would be an issue that this could deal with and and we all know where that's, general where that's happening. Um and that's an example of 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 what this could potentially be work, be be used for.
It's just weird, I mean, I get it.
It is.
You understand the feeling.
I understand.
See how it's ripe for corruption, I mean, it is, it's not, not us, not you, but just like you said, when people realize if one person starts talking and you know, I I'll be, Wes is out there running his land going, oh yeah, we're gonna buy this, it's the wrong person, next thing you know, it's just, it's awful being, I mean, when you're you, when you're in the public eye and you're out there trying to to have, you know, confidentiality, it's really difficult, however, state statute as gives some confidentiality, which I don't think we took advantage of with the promenade, cuz that was the whole essence of, but you can claim an exemption for, now, it's a very finite thirty days, that was what Anthony typed the whole memo on. So all I would ask is explore that and that would keep it in y'all's hands. So you don't have to go to a third party, when I said corrupt, I'm just thinking, who's the third party? And I mean, we don't trust it, we don't know them, maybe, you know, can we talk to him? Is it gonna be this mysterious consultant that we never, you know? I don't understand it and therefore I like, I like the idea of aggregating parcels, I do.
All all the details.
But I would rather it be y'all going out aggregating parcels, exercising the confidentiality if that if that's a, if that's even plausible.
I I have, I have a question, would it be limited to commercial or would it also be part residential?
If if it was in the CRA area, it would be eligible.
Okay.
Eligible.
Eligible, yeah, because I could see an aggregate of residential parcels and create a larger development, if you will.
Which is a bad thing, dude?
No, I'm not saying it's a good or bad thing, I'm just, I'm just saying that you could do it, but your zoning's going to dictate some of that.
And and again, that's just to keep focused on the prize, the goal is the elimination of blight.
Right. Right. And we have blight in more places than just along A one eights.
Yes. So this would authorize staff to put together a program to present to CRA for approval and all the details of the program can be fleshed out at at that time.
I would like to see a program.
Okay.
Because it, I don't think, I think that if you can overcome those concerns, for me, I would be comfortable with it.
I would think so, yeah.
I just have to, I'm willing to overcome them. Gonna make, make sure it's good, and instead of acquiring the property, maybe the city's willing to fund for anyone who does this work that we would do ourselves, so you qualify for a CRA um bring it for the things that we were gonna do, I don't know, so.
Okay.
I.
That that's um an overview of what we were hoping to get approved there, uh the plan, so if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next one, Daniel? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to bring up, I I talked to Dave about this, and I talked to Doug about in the pre um strategic uh retreat about redo, implementing this redevelopment plan with the different programs that y'all came up with, somebody came up with um to help small businesses um matching grant funds, I think we did the sign thing, but we haven't really pushed the facade or painting buildings or anything like that. I think if it 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 could be reviewed and maybe updated and implemented along along with the property. I mean, that's part of the CRA as well.
Yeah, and and that can be brought up at the next CRA board meeting, we could schedule a CRA board meeting to to do, to talk about doing that.
And then, you know, in Cocoa, they have, this, this is their CRA and, you know, we're different than Cocoa, but they put these out and it it tells you all about the different incentive programs. If we could do something like this to educate residents on what's available and how we can help.
Yeah, cuz right now it's just the signs.
Yeah, I think that if if we could make it all together, that would be great. That's all.
Mayor Blake said we're not different than Cocoa, we're actually East Cocoa. And he calls Palm Bay South Cocoa.
Um if there's nothing else on this one, mayor?
No, sir.
Move forward, Daniel. Neighborhood commercial zoning, uh this is a rankable project, um all we're asking for council to do, if you're interested, is direct staff to bring this to the planning and zoning board and have them um have them develop something, neighborhood commercial would be, in my mind, this stretch of North Atlantic Avenue, north of Cumberland Farms, it's a the orphaned area of commercial zoning that was orphaned by the creation of Astronaut Boulevard in the in the sixties. Um so you've got some C one and C two back there that is the same zoning classification as the C one and C two on Astronaut Boulevard. So the things you could do on astronaut, you could do back there by Ocean Gardens Lane, you know, if there was a property available. And I I don't feel, I'm not sure that's appropriate, that uh this is a neighborhood area back there and I think things we should, we should be scaling them down to a neighborhood scale. Um so this would create, if council is interested in directing staff to take this planning zoning board, it would create a new zoning designation that called Neighborhood Commercial or some similar name that uh gets that point across that would change the uses and the the land development regulations and the sign code regulations appropriate for neighborhoods. In a nutshell, Dave, did I say that okay?
Yeah, I I I think the important word was scale.
Yeah.
It's really, is is, it's it's about scale and and the compatibility.
Mm hmm.
And it's the scale that's appropriate on astronaut, appropriate and um along North Atlantic, yeah, yeah.
But I view this as protecting the residential character.
Would this include the mixed use that we've been talking about?
Yeah. I, the mixed use discussion's gonna be coming up soon and it needs to include this area as well. Anything else on this one, mayor?
No, sir.
Okay, moving forward, Daniel. Yes.
Was, thank you, was that last, is the question to council, do we wanna see more? Like.
Yes.
And so instead of diving all in, can we just get a little bit more conceptual? You don't spend a lot of resource and time, but give us maybe something here, you you did it in words, but I think so that we can get a more visual.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, I think what what we could do is prepare a one of a thousand possibility, a map. Prepare a land use map and say, okay, this is what it looks like today.
Mm hmm.
This is what it could potentially look like, this is one outcome that we that we could 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 be positive and we could actually designate some of these different categories that we mentioned, neighborhood and and things like that, so.
We could actually borrow LDRs from other communities that have neighborhood commercial, just show you the difference.
And I know we've got the culture of like, staff works really hard to put together this package ready to go, council can take action. Maybe just on this one, just give us something preliminary, so you're not investing. This is an idea.
Well.
A one pager instead of the full comprehensive.
That's fine, and and then based on that, we could, if the council was comfortable with it, say, you know, let's take it to the P and Z and get them to chew on it in them to.
Incrementally.
Right.
Give them the starting blocks.
Doctor Robert. Doctor Robert.
And that would be, the planning and zoning board would have the puppet meeting process for that. May may I suggest then, Mayor, um, that we also remove this from the rankable projects? Um, and just consider it um, an item that we want to take back to council if if the council agrees with this. That we want to take back the uh, the the single page white sheet to council for consideration, maybe want to have a workshop on it. But make it just a a separate council initiative outside of the strategic planning initiative.
Yes, I think having a one pager, um, agree a hundred percent. And we can, in that one pager, if we think it has merit, maybe we just do a workshop in a week or a month or two with the community and say, you know, maybe at that time staff digs in deep and presents something bigger and we bring it in and dedicate it, but I I I think just learning a little bit more would be a good next step, but.
Yeah, I I I think.
We were talking about workshops and making it a part of the process and zoning is gonna require public notice.
Sure.
Rezoning is state statute gets involved at that point, but I like the idea of workshops, thank you.
Well, I I agree with you. I think we need that one pager to promote a workshop.
Yeah.
Then we have to be careful that we're not trying to bypass planning and zoning because we want to include our committees, our boards. We're trying to give them more things to do. And be more inclusive with them. And if we're just going to do a workshop and then the city council just handles it, we're bypassing the whole thing.
I don't think we legally can. They're land use planning, right?
Yeah, it's statute requires land use decisions to go through the P and Z board. So, yeah, we can't, we can't completely cut them out. But um, I but yeah, I mean, there there's certainly an opportunity for a workshop. And I and I think at the end of the day, what we're going to find and along with the residents, what they're going to find is what we're discussing here is going to be very consistent with our downtown center concept that we've been talking about for years and years and years. This is going to be, we're going, we're talking about scaling commercial uses that allow for outdoor seating uh, for restaurants, for it's gonna be, it's all about scale. It's gonna be walkable, bikeable. Commercial that that supports tho- those type of uses is what we're talking about. Not the automobile uses that we find on astronaut. So it's all about scale, but but the process, we can, we can certainly talk about the process and move it along as however we want to.
In that old picture she's talking about, if we can dig that up, I'd love to see that.
Mayor, um, we are approaching ten o'clock. Um, thank you, Lisa, for reminding me. I know you're listening. This is unexpected fruit of this workshop meeting is that by consensus, we're able to pull some things off from the rankable projects. I think that's very helpful. Wasn't expecting that, but thank you for for going there with me. Just to be clear for the record, we do have consensus to take this off from from being a rankable project. Consider it a council initiative that we'll come back to um, from a perspective of a workshop with the council. Thank you, Dr. Roberts, for that. Okay, ready to move on, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
All right, Daniel. Alternative fuel vehicles. Um, this is continuing our sustainability resiliency plan. Uh, right now, um, we're planning forty thousand dollars. Zach, anything you want to add to this? F one fifties, are they actually available?
Uh, yeah, this is just to continue the fleet electrification. This is the F one fifty hybrids for uh, this will replace a code enforcement vehicle, which is pretty sorely needed, right, Dave? This vehicle's uh, seen better days, so um, this is something we we need to do and it's gonna get us really good with uh, gas savings, which we know is important right now since fuel prices are so high and probably remain high for the foreseeable future, so.
And this, these ones um, will be uh, rankable together under a resiliency category. So this one, I believe the next two are the solar arrays, um, Daniel.
There's one more, two more vehicles, yeah, and then the solar lighting. Um, just continuing the process.
Solar streetlight upgrading, yeah. There's a solar.
Yes.
The other solar.
This is at the sheriff's department, forty eight kilowatt system, PWS system, ten kilowatts. It's a very small system.
So when you see the ranking sheet, these will all be grouped under one category.
Uh, PWS and sheriffs are all together.
Yep.
And the EVs and hybrids.
Yep, all as all as.
So that's all one bundled project? That was smart. Thank you. That helps.
And that was Doug's idea.
Yeah, those will continue to help us to increase our resilience efforts. As we've talked about at the council meeting, these are kind of the phase one development of uh, you know, increasing our our ability to create our own electricity for emergency situations, especially at these two very critical facilities, which is why we chose these two next on um, the list of structures.
All right, anything else on that one, Mayor?
Nope.
Okay, we're on CO at planning and Mayor just recently sent me an email about this. Jim is has been working on this. He's out of town right now, but this should not be on the strategic planning retreat. Uh, the reason is there's there's a little bit of a wrinkle here with the EP. Uh, we can do it, but the city has to be the one that does it. We can't have a volunteer program doing it. Yeah.
Doing the the fencing?
Right.
Is this the fencing?
Yeah.
This is CO planning.
This was specifically for the CEO.
You're right, this is CO planning. I stand corrected, Zach. Please go ahead and present this one.
Uh, so this is just another uh, copy and paste from this past year um, for an additional nineteen thousand COs to get to our overall goal of planting two hundred and twenty thousand COs. We are very close.
And we, at this council, see in the next three years, not voting this through every single year in the budget.
Yeah, even if we, even if we hit the goal, we we should keep going.
This is like paying the electric bill.
All right, should we take it off this, just take it out of this retreat? Okay.
I think so, but any council member at any point can, when we get to the budget, can, I just think that it's I can't imagine not doing this any year. I mean, feel like you didn't celebrate Christmas or something.
There'd be something, there'd be something missing.
Yeah, so I I think if we can scratch it.
One of the most popular things we do every year.
And it's ten, ten thousand, yeah.
There there's pretty incredible results too. The the dunes are migrating east and little dune lets are forming, which we did not do. So that's nature doing its nature thing and rehabilitating the beach by itself. So it's really cool to see this coastal defense naturally build itself up.
Mayor, we we are at ten o'clock. Um, if the council wants to continue, we'll have to have a motion in a second.
Can you give us a glimpse into the, well, I don't think we're bound by the ten thirty unless it's a regular council meeting. Or does it say all meetings? I've I'm not trying to stay a minute later. I'm just saying.
I think we're almost done, Daniel. There's only a couple more here, right?
Well, let let it won't hurt to do it. Uh, let's make a motion to extend for just go longer and let's try to get it done. And what, how much time do you think you need?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen? Let's approve twen- thirty and and get it done in fifteen. That way we don't have to vote again.
I'll make a motion that we extend thirty minutes.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum to extend to ten thirty.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a comment.
The vote, the vote's gonna happen.
Oh, go ahead.
Councilmember Davis.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond. Councilmember Willis.
Four.
All right, with the goal of going fifteen minutes.
Yes, John.
Uh, I just wanted to say, I I've been tracking everything we've been doing with these and what's in the CIP.
Yeah, we've been hitting them.
And and we've been hitting so many of the CIPs that when we get to the CIPs, we will be able to go through the CFPs relatively really quickly. Because a lot of the things we've already talked about, like Veterans Park and these other projects, you've already covered them. So when we come up to them, we can just keep going. So you've actually covered a lot of ground. It's just mixed in with the rankings uh, projects.
Okay, that's all good. Uh, COs, Daniel, we're we're past that. Educational video series, twelve thousand dollars. I can't believe we're able to get it that cheaply, Zach. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
This is under resiliency checkbox also. So any questions on that one? No, that, well, that will be included under the resiliency. All right, let's move on, Daniel. All right, the council Blue Sky projects. Um, these were the ones that were brought up by council. So the first one is increase opportunities for inclusivity, the jobs, greater level accessibility of public parks, facilities, certain programs and activities. City council can approve an initiative authorizing staff to review new projects under the lens of of universal design. I I think we talked about that earlier. I think that's a good way to handle that. There's there's, if there's consensus on that, we'll just record that tonight. Um, I think that's the best way to handle that rather than making a rankable project. So we'll remove that one.
What is it? The universal design?
Yeah.
Where where is that?
Uh, the first one about increasing opportunities for inclusivity, jobs, greater levels of accessibility at public park facilities, certain programs and activities. Can that be handled under universal design is my my comment. I think Councilmember Davis, this was yours.
Well, some of the, some of the things I've read during the break are inclusive of all of those points. So.
You can merge some of them.
Well, I mean, the universal design handles all of those aspects.
So we're okay to remove that from from the consideration in the ranking list?
Yes, and is the goal to make a policy that the city will pursue all construction and improvement projects using universal design?
Where it makes sense to. I mean, I don't know where.
Get this and out, but we're being intentional about it and we're we're codifying it.
Yeah.
Okay.
By consensus.
I I I support that.
Um, next up is Center Street Wizard of Oz proposed mixed use development. I'm not sure, I don't know what to say about that one. I don't really have a whole lot on that.
That's what David had briefed us on. That's the eight acre property.
Oh, that's that's what we're calling up, the Wizard of Oz development.
He's getting a little pre-marketing.
Okay, all right. I didn't know we called it that. That's good.
I don't, I don't think we.
We'll get Elon to call it that, right?
It's because the Wizard of Oz building is at the corner there.
Um, the dignity bus item, um, this was, I believe, Councilmember Angela Raymonds. Um, staff needs more information on this. Is is this a council action item? I don't know that this even requires action by the council. It may only be a transportation method. And if if that's the case, it, I don't think it belongs in strategic planning process.
I I thought uh, Councilmember Raymond just more or less wanted to make it an informational thing.
Okay, so we'll remove that by consensus?
Yeah, I think it's a private bus looking for private property and the city's role might be to offer public property. But yeah, yeah, I think, and she just had a meeting, I think, because she might have more update.
The city of Palm Bay used it, if you want an example.
Yeah, it's really cool. I mean, I think it's, I think it's awesome.
I I just don't know that it's an action item for this council. Uh, next up is what is the city's role in addressing affordable housing? Um, does the council desire to dedicate staff resources towards developing an affordable housing program? That's a rankable project.
I think that if we're pursuing mixed use development and reducing you know, pavement and these developer costs and whatever it is, those are, that's one way to help reduce, you know, affordable housing and yeah, like universal design, I mean, is it affordable should be a question we're we're doing when we're making land use policy, but um, if the if the idea is that the city gets involved in, you know, subsidizing and and writing it's incentive payments for it, I'm not usually into that, but you know, tiny house. Doning code and like Betty Gould property, you know, and the mobile homes, if that's affordable, like figuring out ways to make lower cost homes. That's a, I'm I'm in support of it, but I don't, was this Councilmember Raymond's?
I believe it was.
To, in fairness to her, I'd like to learn what she, what she is looking for. I think ultimately, we we all want affordable housing and so.
So, um, because you'll you'll be ranking things before you meet again as a council. Would you like to remove this and have a separate council discussion on the topic?
I think that would be best.
Yeah.
So so at least let Councilmember Raymond define
Okay.
Where she wants to go with that.
Yeah.
Next one is, should the city continue to pay for EV charging? Um, the city council can direct staff to pursue one or more options to achieve. We're already looking into this.
I thought we'd already gone there.
Yeah, so we can remove that one.
Yes, please.
The answer is no, I think, to that question.
Uh, all right, next is the potential of insurance companies to pay for wellness benefit membership for City Recreation Center. Gustavo, you've got silver sneakers already on board. So are we gonna say that one's checked off?
They're calling you the broker, the insurance broker. You're bringing them in. That's awesome.
So we'll continue to expand this effort um, as programs are made available. So we'll remove that one, Mayor? Now, council.
I think it's
Okay.
Betting them up, knocking them down.
Possibility of the city providing matching funds to support FDOT A one E safety measures. Uh, city council can direct staff to define areas for improved safety above and beyond the scope of work proposed by FDOT. Um, but my comment on this is that city councils in their resolutions over the years has focused on almost exclusively safety on A one A. And FDOT is working very hard to give us those safety improvements and the the plans that they've shown us all have got every one of those safety improvements on there. So if we want to dedicate staff resources to finding things that are improved beyond that. Is that the, is that the effort? I'm not sure which council member brought this forward.
And and I, my my point was, you know, we all want safety, absolutely. FDOT is coming up with things um, to make it safe, but you know, if per se, we don't go with the roundabout and we go with option B. In my conversation with FDOT, they, you know, said that they would like matching funds, so if if uh, option B isn't up to what we would like as a council or as a city, we would have money to say we want to upgrade the lights or the trees or the so that was my point of having a fund that we would have money to do upgrades if we decided down the road, option B or whatever. It would be money to upgrade as we wanted. That's, you know, and with safety, absolutely, you know, that's the main thing, but a matching fund support.
I'm sorry, but based upon FDOT, their requirements and what they would have to check off to say that we were gonna add trees to it would go against their rules for constructing the road.
Well, not necessarily trees, but upgrading the lighting. If they say, okay, you're gonna get this light and we go, well, we would really have
nicely light. Three lights, they could do three cheese trees. The only difference is the cost, but all of them work is the example she's saying. Like, the design allows for a dogwood, a royal palm or a whatever, and and you could pick and and F dot might choose the lower cost one, but we want the higher cost. Yeah, and I mean, this is something I'd brought up and brought to Todd and I, you know, for the years it was, we're seeing the resolution, we're doing all we can. Called a meeting with Representative Saroy and Called a meeting with Representative Saroy and, uh, the former, uh, Mike Shannon, the former secretary before Purdue. Noah Todd, they came in, we, we met, matching funds came up. Remember, we brought it up at the meeting? So here's the the having something to show that we're being intentional to leverage that, I think is a good thing. How much is our reserve over? We're at twenty percent? Is it over still by two percent?
Uh, the, uh, unallegated reserve, it was at, uh, like twenty-two point five.
So, and we need to be at twenty?
We, we have to hold twenty. Yes, and that's, that's by council because I think, you know, if council had ever decided it could go with the state and you could go down to seventeen percent.
But two and a half percent is roughly what?
Uh, two hundred, uh, 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 two hundred thousand.
Could this council say that the two and a half, anything over the twenty percent, the two and a half percent is dedicated? Just informally today that, Mr. City Manager, before you withdrew that, that we reserve first right of refusal to have a council vote on whether or not we want to use that for A one A. I mean, it's just sitting there. It's over the minimum amount. And, I mean, at least it gives us something. Council can vote, no, we're not gonna use that on A one A, but just saying that's money that's kind of sitting there.
I think it also shows the residents that we are really serious about A one A. We're putting skin in the game to make sure that we get it the way residents and lump.
And this F dot said to me at the time, and I know Purdue is now the former secretary, that a city having funds ready to go is always helpful. And I know right now they're excited about the roundabout, so they're showing everything we want. Well, we gotta get the citizens on board. And so I think that this isn't gonna be this clean. There's gonna be trade-offs. And so it, but having a hundred thousand dollars is better than nothing.
How would you like to handle it as far as the retreat rankings?
Keep it on.
Keep it on, okay? And anything else we want to talk about on that one before we move on? I understand it, it's safety improvements, it's also lighting, it's also landscaping. It's just putting a pot of money for making it everything we want it to be.
Yes.
Got it.
Now, the unallegated reserve though is actually reserved, council does that in case, God forbid, you know, you need the two point some million or whatever, that's there for that. So I'm not sure. You'd have to determine in the code if you would have to do something with the code to say you were gonna lose some of that money.
But it's twenty percent, I think.
It's twenty, twenty, and if.
So the question is, is can we pull the two percent?
And, and use it for, at your discretion. Yeah, I don't know if it's written, but it's.
I don't.
Policy just says twenty percent.
But what about ARPA money? Does it make some of the ARPA money to something like that?
Yeah, but the ARPA money is not going to be around for, you know, we're probably, the city's probably gonna spend.
Just to start us off and then down the road.
I think you have to expend the ARPA money by, what year is it?
Uh, twenty twenty-six, I think.
Yeah, so we won't even have North Atlantic. Yeah.
I just think that we, we need to put some money towards, you know, making it.
But how much is the cost of one palm tree? There's a fine.
So, th- this can be developed.
Then I think it needs to be.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, ready to move forward, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Next one is improved beach accessibility and user experience. Uh, my opinion, this is anticipated outcome of the Presidential Streets Master Plan. So this can be removed?
Uh, yes, if in three months, if Dave's right, I wrote that down. I said in three months, we're gonna get the Presidential Streets Master Plan. But whenever we get that, I'm just saying ahead is if this council wants to, breaking those beach entrances off might be to, to separate it from it. Cause I don't want the Presidential Streets multi-million twenty-year project to slow down the true gathering place of this community and to do all those, those beach entrances first. Make them, um, ADA accessible, beautiful. And so I'm not convinced that merging it is good if it's gonna slow it down unless it's early in the project. And I don't see a bunch of stormwater major redevelopment happening down at the beach anyways, but the pressures we're feeling. So, as of today, I would like to maybe wait, I mean, keep it separate. That's it. That's my two cents.
You want it to be a rankable project?
I would.
Okay, so we'll.
And I don't see it as this big expensive project either.
Okay, we'll keep it in there then.
Thinking, I'm talking about a little polish of.
Two more and we're done, Mayor. Um, ready to proceed?
Uh, yes.
Okay, performance metrics dashboard to compare Cape Canaveral to comparable cities. Staff would be happy to investigate opportunities for meaningful metrics and, uh, future reporting. I, I think we talked about that at the, uh, last, I don't know when it was, but we decided to put it into the, uh, annual report. We've got to start up that already.
That, this is a slow just, you see these, all these metrics. I don't, but every year, what is the sustainability metric that, like, every department has one, but slowly build out that engagement piece to where, you know, financial metric or the metrics that are most important to you that we can use as a communication tool. We actually already have these. All I'm saying is, is can we invest into verifying their accuracy and, and, and working on getting them out? Um, and maybe incorporating it as a part of how we define success in the city. And so.
Does it have to be compared to other cities or is it just what we're doing?
Well, there's the, the Florida benchmarking consortium is a, already a resource out there that we're starting to look into to see what kind of meaningful metrics are already out there for cities. So we're already on this.
I am right. I mean, there's, there's so many metrics, but, but what are the ones that, that are meaningful to us?
Right.
That's it.
Does that, um, stay on as a rankable project or be removed?
Yeah.
Okay. Next up, last one is explore relook, reduction in cities, uh, land development regulations, parking minimums with the added benefit to reduce stormwater runoff utilizing core services. How do you want to handle that one, Mayor?
Might be the most important one I've seen, for me personally. I think it's bigger than, it's really important.
So leave it on there?
For, yeah.
Okay.
I think this is one that.
Daniel, that's the last one, right? Yeah, I think it is. Okay, no, uh, there's more. I'm sorry, we have, um.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna, um.
You have more, Daniel? No, I don't have, I've got some here. How do we increase inclusivity engagement and needs of the younger, e.g. less than twenty-five years of age residents? Um, do anybody remember who put that one up? How do we increase the inclusivity slash engagement and needs of younger residents, e.g. twenty-five years or less?
Because it would be too broad to, to start off with.
Is that something to keep on as a rankable project?
So, that's okay, cause I, once we get the information, we can bring it up.
Okay, remove that one?
Yeah.
Todd's got a list, it's not on here.
Yeah, I, I brought my personal list.
Well, I don't wanna, I like, I don't wanna lose that. And so i- if, maybe if you're running with it at a future council meeting, maybe give us an update and discussion.
That's what we're doing. We're waiting till we have all our information together where we have needs and then we'll present it.
Cause we heard that. We heard that from the residents at that, one of the work, three times.
Alright, the next one is Sheri Down Park Purchase. Um, I don't know why it's called Purchase. But, uh, I, in my opinion, this should remain in the strategic plan, but it's largely beyond the city's control at this point. We're waiting for the county to play ball with us on that. And I don't think that we should consider that a rankable project, but keep it in the strategic plan. Okay, so we'll remove that one. Um, public gathering place at beach, uh, maybe Sheri Down Park, um, same thing. Those can be merged.
Oh, um, Sheri Down Park was an example.
It was an example.
Okay.
But I mean, what other public gathering places, opportunities would we have at the beach? It's all private property, except for the beach and streets.
Yeah, every beach crossover is a little gathering place.
I, yeah, it already is. So I, I would, I would be comfortable merging those two because, uh, Sheri Down is really the only one uh, other than that. Alright, we'll merge those two. Uh, possibility of making Patriots Park an inclusive park. Imagine Councilmember Davis, that was yours? No, Patriots Park?
Uh, I think I said it.
Okay.
But I think, aren't we, um.
Under universal design, yeah. So remove that one, council okay with that? Okay. Uh, review of parking LDRs, we, we covered that other, earlier, I think I got, I think you got two mentions. I think that's why it's here. So I'm just going to say we're keeping that one. Uh, review of parking LDRs. It's, it's a repeat of, uh, previous one. It was just phrased differently. Um, pursue a dedicated economic development staff position was, uh, one of the council's blue sky items.
That was, uh, mine. I, uh, I have an agenda summary item I sent to David Dickey. Stuart Smith spoke about this today. I said it at the strategic planning meeting as well. My goal is at the next meeting to, to, uh, work with Dave. And, um, you obviously, Todd, and get something together, um, and figure out reignite the economic development board. Um, figure out an economic development position, whether it's internally and try to get a lot of these things in here. If we had economic development, it would be really good. And I know we're at a time, but I'll, I'll e, or print this out, but essentially, we haven't met in twenty year, there's an interesting trend in our economic development efforts. Since twenty thirteen, we've met. Over ten years, we've met, you know, one time in the past five years, economic development. I know Councilmember Willis served on that board. And we, before that, the, um, the Business and Cultural Development Board, which handled economic development, was meeting intensely sometimes up to fifteen times per year in their ten-year run. That's an active board, but there was no full-time economic development director. Then they got rid of the board meeting essentially, hired our very own, or appointed Todd Morley, who is Economic Development Director, launched this new board, which I think you were on the founding board. Was it the twenty fourteen board? No, shortly after. And then they, they came out of the gates, they met four times in two thousand thirteen, they met two times. And then every year went zero, one, one, zero, zero, one, zero, zero. And so it's like Economic Development Director, Low Board Meeting, it's one or the other. My hope is can we have an economic development dedicated responsible person or change, maybe it's not a new hire and also have an economic development board. And take Mr. Snid's email, which he brought up some very good, um, points. And I laid out a proposed strategy for strategic planning on just some clear next steps that we can take. Incremental, small steps to see if this is something the community wants. And I think that a person with a steady hand on the wheel here, reporting to our city manager, maybe they already exist, totally your decision, Todd. Uh, can run with a lot of these things that I think you're responsible for. And even when you were Economic Development Director, Todd, I don't think you were truly full-time, which is.
We all wear many hats.
Many hats and you were, I mean, you project manager and you'd be wasted talent if you didn't. But I'm just, I, I ponder that and and, uh, that was it. And so.
Mayor, would you like to keep that on as a rankable?
I was fully prepared to present that, but, um, obviously was running out of time, but I'll give a copy of this. Yes, I would.
Okay, we'll keep that one on. And the last one that I have is metrics for code enforcement and citizen engagement satisfaction.
Um, that, that merges with the metric. That's a duplicate.
Okay, so we'll just remove this one.
Yes.
Okay, so Mia, for your records, I, I have notes here that of all the council member blue sky items, we're going to remove all except for, uh, matching A one A funds. Improved beach accessibility, performance metrics. So removing cities LDR parking minimums. And dedicated economic development staff position. So those remain as rankable items. The others are removed for various reasons. And that finishes the review of these items. Thank you, Mayor. John, you got ten seconds.
Quick, so if you look at your, uh, your books. So we could do, we'll do it like this. Take a look at the fire rescue, uh, services, uh, CIPs. I think you'll see that these are all the standard ones that are in every year. The biggest item in here, of course, is the purchase of the fire pumper truck. And those funds are in our investment account. Uh, they will, uh, aid the purchase of, uh, our share, uh, our half share of the, um, of the, the vehicle, okay? Um, is there anything from FR one to FR eight that council feels like it needs to make a comment on or talk about?
I just had, um, a comment and I think Dave was.
Yeah.
No.
Okay. What does that mean?
Well, these are, we're out of rankings, so we don't, the pressure is off. We don't have to worry about the, the strategic planning retreat for ranking. This is a budget preparation document. My suggestion is if there are questions you have, meet with John, ca- give him a call. Uh, make sure you get those addressed before too long so that we, we can go forward with our budget process.
Well, I could've said what I wanted to say by the time.
But we have like thirty items and you're on the first one.
I just wanted to ask.
Please.
Um, you know, we, we, we split the cost of.
With the port.
Yeah. But do we split the cost of the maintenance on the buildings and, and the, uh, equipment?
They handle their buildings, we handle our buildings.
Yeah.
And the equipment that we use.
The equipment is usually split.
Okay.
Like the street, the fire station on Jackson, port has nothing to do with funding any maintenance there. And we don't have anything to do with funding the maintenance of the one at the port either.
Okay, and then there's one on the other side of the.
Yeah, they do that one too.
So like equipment, twenty-five thousand dollars on equipment, do they share that with us?
No, 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 with, that's already being done. The, the, the figures you see on here is, is what we're on the hook for. Yeah, that's our part, that's our part.
There's another portion that's being handled outside of this.
Absolutely, up at the port.
Okay, good. That was my, thank you.
And, and, and if we're, if we, if we're not going forward here, I just wanted to, to, uh, make a note that as I was looking, as everyone was talking, CR five, uh, it's Colactic Park. It was not taken out. It is CR five, but it's out in year twenty-five and twenty-six. I just wanted to note that.
If we give us a deadline. Cause you had it, your work from under it.
Oh, absolutely. I mean.
If we all email you individually, anything we want to pull or anything we have a question on, and then is, is.
Um, I, I, I would, no, I would say, you know, by May, May tenth or whatever would be fine. Yeah, I, because it'd be nice, because we're gonna start rolling everything up. But you've got till the middle of May to tell me if you, uh, want to change a CIP.
So we could just have a one-on-one and this isn't like.
Yeah, yes. And, and also I think what you're gonna find when you look through this, you, you all have talked about so much in these CIPs already that you're gonna say, oh, that's the way I understood it or whatever. But yes, come see me or schedule something with me by, you know, let's knock it out by May fifteenth. That gives us enough time.
And you know what else I think happened tonight? When we do get into the budget workshops, I think they're gonna go a lot smoother. That was the goal. Because if, the, these were the, like, the things we're having and we'll be able to move.
Yeah, it's a training ground and we, we'll change the format of this and, and anything we did in the strategic retreat next time, we'll have a, we'll have slides with them and everything, so.
No, I feel very, uh, I feel much more prepared and aware of what's going on compared to years past. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. It helps us as well.
Yes. Council, anything? Yeah. Yeah, I.
The vision, the revisioning, Dr. Roberts, the revisioning, that, that will reappear. Uh, that, that's going, the city council is going to be seeing that, the results of that at a public meeting. I anticipate that will be the May meeting.
So.
And when we have the results from that, in time to add things to the budget if we want to or like, like Dr. Roberts is saying, we don't have their input on what they spend their time going to the meetings and speaking about.
Well, I could tell you this, that the proposed, you know, the proposed budget has to be to council by July first, which has to allot us at least a week or so before to, to, to not be changing things. However, when you get in your middle of the month council meeting in July, if you want to change something, there's, then that's when council says, you know what, we want this changed or whatever. And then we have until, you know, almost, uh, you know, August fourth to to solidify our changes, cause then I have to report everything to ETRIM and all that stuff, so.
And there'll be more budget workshops.
Yes, there's one in the middle of July.
So we have till July before the first budget comes to us. We're hearing May is the.
Presentation of the report.
Think of this as staff has got a chance to present their projects. Council's got a chance to understand them. We've got, I think, a little bit of our ideas, captured some blue sky. We still need the, to capture the revisioning public um, information. If we get it in May, if you're right, which is, which would be great. Don needs his questions answered by early May. And so maybe in that May meeting or even June, the following meeting, we can make changes. And then we'll have two to three budget workshops to do it. And so if we could maybe promote those budget workshops that are already existing in cohesion with the strategic, like, does the report from the, the visioning match up with the budget? I think that's your point, right? I mean, and it's a good one. Out, out of this one or out of the strategic planning, when his report's ready, will it be with the public? Yep. Yep. Uh, perhaps if May, we can maybe vote to meet at five o'clock that night and, and open with the, or maybe if it's June, whenever it's ready. But um, you are heard, and I think this whole council is who's here tonight, hear you. And I think we, if we're heading in a direction without the citizens, we're gonna have an opportunity to re-steer the car, you know, back on track and align it with those strategic. And so I think give us a chance to do that. But it'll come down to what that report says. And, and I, and I understand the order, what you're saying, but. Well, at a minimum, I'm willing to meet with the citizens as mayor and go over the strategic plan. And I think if council can make it together, we can all do that together with them. So, thank you. Good points. With that, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Alright, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.